Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1 Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
We're gonna get started. Welcome to the October 5, 2020 Falmouth Select Board Meeting. My name is Megan English-Braga, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. As we have been doing over the last few months, this meeting is being held via Zoom. And on the website for the town, under the Select Board section, are all of the instructions on how individuals can participate in this meeting. Even though it's virtual, individuals can still join the meeting. And using the chat feature, they can comment or ask to be added to speakers if we're on a topic that you are concerned about. For those folks who aren't comfortable using Zoom in that way, we encourage all of you to reach out to us via email or telephone in advance of our month, excuse me, our weekly meetings, and give us information that you want us to either share with the rest of the board or read into the public record. And then folks have been doing that, I think, fairly successfully over the last few months. And it seems as if most people are able to, you know, get their comments and their concerns across to us. But if folks are struggling in any way, please reach out to us and let us know the best way that your thoughts and concerns can be shared with the board. What I'll do is just for the record, I'll go through and I'll, when I say your name, just note present. So Megan English-Braga, present. Nancy Taylor. Sam Patterson.
Patterson, present.
Doug Brown.
I'm present.
Okay, and Doug Jones was on. I think he might be having some trouble, so we'll anticipate that he'll be joining us again. And for Town Management, we have Julian Suso, Town Manager. We have Peter Johnson Staub, Assistant Town Manager. And as always, we have our IT staff behind the scenes assisting us. So if you will first call the meeting to order, if you'll join me in a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of proclamations tonight, which are always great. We haven't had as many, it feels like, in the last few months. And sometimes they really are the highlight of our agenda. So the first one we have is for an individual who is completing the rank of Eagle Scout. So Sam Patterson, would you like to read that proclamation?
It'd be a pleasure. Whereas William Colby Andre of Boy Scout Troop 40 has completed, has successfully completed the qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And William Colby and Andre set, met these challenges with a plum and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and his community. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor toward its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas William Colby Andre is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege, now therefore, we, Megan English-Braga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, and Nancy R. Taylor, as the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim William Colby Andre as Eagle Scout in Falmouth. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this fifth day of October 2020.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, by roll call. Taylor? Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
And English-Braga, aye. Wonderful. Do we have, I don't know, is William available?
Is not.
Okay.
Part of the state.
That would be great.
Right. Just pulled out one of, part of one of the sections. This is his statement. "The leadership I learned being part of Scouts has helped me in my life to impact others in a positive way. The skills I learned as a scout and at scout camp helped me be a fun, caring, and positive leader in both school and work situations. Completing 50-mile hikes, 50-mile canoe trips, camping in the wilderness, and planning and carrying out my Eagle project have taught me that I am capable of doing hard tasks with the help of others and the right mindset."
That's wonderful. And, and just for folks who don't know, I'm just reading here that his project was working with 300 committee in Falmouth, and he can, he worked on creating a loop trail, a trail loop about two miles long, and he built three benches for that loop. So really, another one of those, I think we see this with these projects, you know, projects that really are gonna last for a long time and give back to the community. So just a wonderful, you know, just a wonderful accomplishment. So congratulations to William and to his family. Great. We have another proclamation tonight, for 100th Birthday Proclamation, Marjorie Atwood Rugan. And I do believe that we have some indication that Marjorie might be watching tonight. So whomever wants to read that proclamation, go ahead, Doug Brown, if you would.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas Marjorie Atwood Rugan, a resident of Falmouth, will be celebrating her 100th birthday on October 21, 2020. Whereas Marjorie is a World War II veteran, having served as a Navy wave for 11 years until 1954. Whereas, as recently as three years ago, Marjorie marched in Falmouth parades with veterans. Whereas, following her military service, Marjorie returned to teaching. She taught physical education at the college and high school levels until she retired from Bridgewater State College. Whereas, Marjorie and her mother were some, some of the original homeowners in 1963 in Great Harbors in East Falmouth. Marjorie has lived there full-time for many years and taught exercise classes at the Great Harbors Clubhouse for many of those years. Whereas, Marjorie has been a longtime member of the First Congregational Church in Falmouth. Now therefore, the Select Board in the Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 21, 2020, as Marjorie Atwood Rugan Day. In witness thereof, we, Megan English-Braga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, Nancy R. Taylor, have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed to this, on this 28th day of October, today's the October, it says September, type of 2020.
Wonderful. Thank you. Second?
Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English-Braga, aye. And I think that we have Linda Belizzi, who is Marjorie's neighbor, and I think one of the individuals who brought this to our attention. And if we could bring her on, and she can just let us know if she's able to, we'll have this all signed, and maybe she'll be able to, we can mail it to her perhaps, so that she can give it to Marjorie? Can you hear us, Linda?
I can.
Wonderful.
Thank you. That would be wonderful.
Okay, great. So perhaps if you'll just, I will ask Mr. Suso if Diane could just reach out to Linda, so we can just make sure that this proclamation, once it's, once we all get into the office and sign it, can get sent to Marjorie. And we wish her, I know it's a little bit early, but we wish her an early happy birthday, and really just tremendous accomplishments. And I'm sure these are just a few of all the highlights in a, in a very long, well-lived life. So please give our well wishes to Marjorie.
And also, thank you for your service.
Yes, thank her for her service. Thank you. Okay, next we have recognition. Nancy?
I really would like to recognize and call out the Falmouth Public Schools. The district has done an amazing job managing this high health crisis. Their ability to be flexible and to create, you know, staffing patterns as they go is a really, really difficult thing to do. And so kudos to them. And I just hope that they keep doing such really awesome work and keep us informed. And if there's any way that we can support them, I'd certainly be happy to do that. It's a very difficult time.
It is. And we're gonna hear a little bit more about it from this particular issue at the high school from Scott McGann when he does his update. But great recognition for what we know is just ongoing challenges. So thank you. Any announcements from the board?
I hesitate to announce really, but I think there's some sort of a partial opening of the high school tomorrow, but I didn't find it. I saw something today, but I don't remember where it was. So call or check in with the school department.
And I think they're working hard to keep their website up to date, so that may be really
Yes, exactly. Public comment. Let me just look and see. I don't see anything in public comment. While we give it a moment, did anyone receive anything they were asked to read into the public record during this period?
No.
Okay. So I'll keep an eye out, and if anything comes through at public comment, if somebody's just a little bit slow in getting it in there, but we'll, we'll move forward. So under summary of actions, vote to allocate $350,000 of AFC nutrient management funds for preparation of Great Pond targeted watershed management plan. Mr. Suso, did you want to just walk us through that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I should also note, we have wastewater superintendent Amy Lowell with us, if we can bring her on to make some additional comments. You do have a communication from Amy just summarizing this proposal, and I'm happy to defer to her for additional expanded comments.
Thank you. Hi, Amy, welcome. Good. Just unmute yourself.
Hello.
Perfect. Thank you. And we did have in our packet, obviously, the very good update that you provided. Just for the public, if you can just give us a little bit of a summary of this, so that folks who didn't look at our, our packet ahead of time know what we're talking about.
Sure. I'm asking for the Board of Selectmen to vote to allow us to use Air Force for, Air Force Center for Environmental Excellence Funds to fund the next step of wastewater planning. The town submitted a comprehensive wastewater management plan, has a long name. It was a Notice of Project Change Update for the South Coast Watersheds in December of 2019. And that was approved by the state. And the one of the, one of the secretary's certificate approving that outline in detail, one of the next steps, or the next major step in the wastewater planning process, was to prepare a, what they call a targeted watershed management plan for Great Pond. Because Great Pond is the watershed, Great Pond's watershed is the watershed that the, this last plan envisioned would be the focus of the next phase of wastewater system expansion. So the next stage step in our planning is to prepare a, this targeted watershed management plan for Great Pond. And that step would really, it's not just a plan. What we're asking for is $350,000 from the AFC nutrient management funds to take this next step, which really gets us to the point of being able to design and, and construct the next phase of wastewater management in Falmouth. And the way it does that is, first, we're gonna, in collaboration with the Water Quality Management Committee, the DPW would work with GHD, our engineering consultant, to do some more fieldwork and groundwater modeling work related to the recharge sites for the recharge of the next, of the treated wastewater from the next phase of searing. And that fieldwork and that modeling would really, is the background information that we would, we would need to help the town make the, make the decision about where the treated wastewater from this next phase of expansion will be discharged. And that we will also work on additional modeling and planning for design and layout of the wastewater collection system. And that is just a little more detailed planning than what's gone on so far. Siting lift stations and defining what parts of the area could be served by gravity and what parts could be served by low pressure or grinder pump systems. So this is really authorizing, asking the Board of Selectmen to authorize us to do this next phase of planning. As I'd said, the cost of this next step is $350,000. And the schedule we've outlined is to have a final targeted watershed management plan for Great Pond by the, approximately the end of calendar year 2022. So in a year and a quarter or so. And, and then the, the steps beyond that would be laid out in that, in that plan. But this is part of the, the process to get to the point where we can design the next, design this next system and get it permitted and approved.
Thank you very much, Amy. I think it's helpful for the public to hear that. Sam?
Yes, Amy, you know that we're limited in terms of discharge, but should we get the discharge permit from the state, do we have the plant capacity that allows us to move? In other words, have we budgeted for the amount of sewage treatment that this new expansion would require?
Thank you for asking that. A companion project is the upgrade of the wastewater treatment facility. And there is a, a funding request at this Fall's Town Meeting to begin the design of the next phase of wastewater plant improvement and expansion. And then in the spring of 2021, so coming up in April, there will be a funding request of about $20 million for the, for the design and construction of the upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility. That would, not only are, are many of these upgrades needed to modernize the, the treatment facility, but also to handle the projected flow from the existing wastewater system service area, as well as the projected flow from the next phase of expansion, which I think I didn't actually say previously, is the Tea Ticket Acapescot area, which is the lower watershed to Great Pond. So yes, there is this companion project that is, that is proceeding. We, we're gonna be, I'm requesting funds for the, to begin the design of that in November.
Thank you. Any other questions for Amy? Okay. Do I have, Doug, did you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just, when I heard the mention of the AFC funds, it reminded me during announcements, I should have mentioned that the harvesting of the vegetation on Mill Pond is starting tomorrow. They should have that done probably this week. That's a big, big benefit we're getting from the AFC fund as well. Thank you.
Definitely important, important financial resource for these really, you know, challenging issues that we always are facing around water quality and wastewater. So if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved. Patterson?
I would second that.
Okay, Brown, second. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. By roll call. Taylor?
You're muted.
She's muted. I'll, I'll come back. Patterson?
I.
Kelly Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. We really appreciate it. Very great explanation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We're a little bit early for our public hearing for the change of officers. So why don't, are people able to? Can you talk a little bit about, Mr. Suso, would you be prepared to talk about Town Hall reopening? Is that about a 10-minute discussion?
Certainly could be. Yes. We have a graphic to share on the screen.
Great. Sorry to throw everyone upside down, but want to use our time wisely. Great.
As the board is aware, we've talked about a reopening to the public, and this is a draft, really a draft statement that would put that in motion, Madam Chair. I can read through it quickly if that's agreeable. Would be, "Dear Falmouth residents and visitors, the COVID-19 pandemic continues to present a significant health risk to residents, visitors, and Town Hall employees. During this most challenging time, I respectfully ask everyone who seeks to transact business with the town to consider whether you indeed need to physically enter Town Hall to transact your business or secure the information that you desire. Bills can be paid by mail, telephone, text, Dropbox, or online at the address shown on this graphic, which we will be making available at the town website. Also, staff members from all departments can be reached by telephone or email. And a directory of department phone numbers and email addresses is also available at the address that's noted online. A large gray Dropbox has been placed outside the front of Town Hall for any and all transactions that you may wish to deliver. This box is secure and is emptied multiple times each day, and it's very easily accessible. We also continue to have a drop, to have drop boxes in the rear of Town Hall for specific applications and related materials to the Building Department, Conservation, Planning, Zoning, Board of Appeals, Health Department, and others. And we've had a number of developers and contractors and others use those drop boxes. To protect the health of Falmouth residents, visitors, and town employees, a number of health and safety measures have been put in place, consistent with the guidelines provided by the Commonwealth, as follows. All visitors are required to wear a face covering or mask. Automatic hand sanitizer dispensers have been placed at all entrances to Town Hall to protect your health and safety. Please utilize them. Town employees self-screen for symptoms every day, and are directed to stay home when sick. We also ask visitors to avoid entering Town Hall when sick. Floor markers have been set out to designate six-foot social distances for individuals who may be waiting in line in Town Hall. Split doors, glass shields, and other barriers have been installed to maintain social distancing separation and minimize direct exposure. The lower level is arranged with a one-way entrance and exit. Public restrooms are available in the lower level, where our barrier-free restroom is located. Meeting rooms are posted with limited capacity of eight persons for 1,000 square feet, in compliance with Governor Baker's Emergency Order Number 48. Regular cleaning and sanitation of the building, including all high-touch areas such as workstations, surfaces, and door handles. To reduce your wait time and limit the number of people congregating inside Town Hall, we encourage all visitors who do need to enter the building to consider making an appointment where it is reasonable and appropriate. Please continue utilizing online transactions with town departments whenever, wherever possible. Be assured that you will be served without the need to visit Town Hall. We understand that this process is not practical for some visits to the Town Clerk's Office. Finally, thank you for your patience and understanding of these temporary circumstances. Be assured the Town Hall staff and all town police have been working diligently and consistently to deliver your municipal government services uninterrupted during the entirety of this pandemic. We all look forward to a safe return to more normal Town Hall operations and service. Stay safe. And again, for the board, this is in anticipation of planned reopening to the public set for Tuesday, October 13, which is the workday right after Columbus Day holiday next Monday, a week from today.
Great, thank you. Any questions about that for Mr. Suso? Nope, I think that's that's very clear. Great, thank you.
Thank you. We will proceed in that manner, and I appreciate uh Select Board member's support and that of the customers we're so privileged to serve. Thank you very much. And I should, I'd be uh remiss if I didn't thank Town employees once again for their continued diligent work and commitment during these very challenging times. Thank you to all.
Yes, thank you. Um, just a notation on a couple of items. Um, vote to approve Select Board five-year strategic plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. We're gonna continue that. Um, there are a few pages that were missing from the draft that we received, and rather than trying to kind of on the fly go through it tonight and not use our time the most efficiently, we will do that in upcoming meeting once we have the whole packet um in our in our possession. Um, also, thank you for, he just wants to be part of our meeting, Doug.
Robert. Could you please intent entertain this dog?
Um, how about? I know, we all understand. We get it.
Sorry.
Also, how about if we do, we have five more minutes, four more minutes. How if we do some of the minutes so that we can check that off? Has anyone had an opportunity to look at the?
They weren't ready.
Yeah.
I thought my packet was just missing them. Okay.
No, still in process.
Easy enough.
Two articles at Town Meeting, just to be, or do them. We certainly could make recommendations on the capital and non-capital.
If you like the the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund priorities, might be a quick item as well.
Okay, great. Why don't we do that? Because it's higher up in the list. So um, are you talking to us about that, Peter?
Sure, I'd be happy to. You have a memo in your packet. Uh, and let me just read it for clarity for those folks at home. What we're talking about is the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund uh priorities as determined by the Board of Selectmen who served, sorry, the Select Board who served as the trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Not be confused with the Falmouth Housing Authority or the Falmouth Housing Trust.
So many.
With that said, um, we, the board had previously adopted a set of funding priorities. This is an update. You have a memo in your packet from Carla Peroni, our housing coordinator, highlighting the changes to the priorities previously adopted. And I will just overview those very briefly. We added, um, and I should say the these priorities were developed by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Working Group, of which Sam Patterson is a member, along with a member of the Planning Board uh and others. And we added a section for um, actually in the preamble, a statement that affirms the board's commitment to diversity uh in housing and making sure that there are equal opportunities uh and fair housing, which is to some extent encoded in the requirements for the Community Preservation Act and the use of those funds. Uh, but we thought that bore emphasis in the introduction. We also um added a highest priority section to reiterate that the highest priority at this time is rental units um in the fifty to eighty percent of area median income range, as well as mixed income developments, multi-family housing, and units that are ADA accessible. Uh, some additional changes that were made include land conservation and in the there's also an an objective that the working group has identified as a priority to initiate a program to provide owner-occupied rehabilitation. And there are some regulations uh from the Department of Revenue related to the use of community preservation funds that fairly narrowly um limit our abilities in that end. So it it can be done. We just need to be very particular about the way in which that program works, and it would be our intent to partner with a a nonprofit entity to administer such a program. So that pretty much covers the changes that are proposed, and you have the full set of priorities in your packet.
Any questions um or thoughts from the board about this? I think it was presented very clearly. Yes, Nancy?
I just had um a a question. When you look at the um the populations served, the only thing that caught my eye was larger families needing three-plus bedrooms. Do we have a lot of families needing three-plus bedrooms?
I don't believe we have, no, I don't believe we have a large number of them, but the housing opportunities for them are very, very limited.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Peter. Seeing none, do I have a motion? To vote on these?
I would move approval of the uh new funding priorities for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund as with us being the trustees of it.
Patterson, second.
Hey, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by, oh, go ahead. So go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I might mention that, you know, this has been written to comply with the housing production plan that the town actually conducted last year. So it really reflects what we've been advised are the priorities that we need to focus on.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, by roll call, Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Great suggestion. It was right to seven thirty, so perfect. Um, next we have an application, our public hearing tonight, application for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and a change of ownership interest of an all-alcoholic common victor license, Jay-Z Restaurant, Inc., DBA Josh's at Davisville, three thirty-nine East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. And let me just read the notice. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws as amended that Jay-Z Restaurant Incorporated, DBA Josh's at Davisville, has applied for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and a change of ownership interest of its all-alcoholic common victor license located at three thirty-nine East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. A hearing to be held via Zoom virtual meeting on Monday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty, at seven thirty PM on the above application. And this was published Friday, September twenty-fifth, in the Falmouth Enterprise. So welcome. I do believe that Kimberly Martin is with us. Can you hear us, Kim?
I can, yes.
Great. Um, welcome. So we um, we have the application in front of us. Do we have any questions from the board at all?
I do not.
And does the board have any questions for uh Ms. Martin?
Uh, no, this just uh clears up the paperwork for her, so she can carry on.
I know, she's just to keep doing all the work she's been doing, but this just makes it official, so.
Totally official, yes. Yep.
Um, great. Anything else from the board? Any?
Uh, just wish her well and hope business is okay through all this crazy pandemic. I know it's probably not, but I hope it gets better.
We're, 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 we're doing it, you know, so we have a great staff and a lot of, a lot of supporters.
You should do.
For that.
Amazing scallop appetizer that I was just talking about yesterday. So that that alone should get you um this application approved.
Thanks, Nick.
Um, do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept.
A second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? I see none by roll call, Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next we have um discussion or update on COVID nineteen issues and status update on municipal beach parking. If we can bring in uh Scott McGann. Welcome, Scott. How are you?
Good, everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so where are we at? Uh, our current case count is two seventy-eight. Um, it's about, been about, this will be about the fourth or fifth week that we've been averaging about um a dozen or so cases. I don't know what we'll end up for this particular week. Um, most of the ta- there's about, you know, a a typical week for us has been over the last four weeks, has been about five or so cases, give plus or minus, varying age, varying reasons. There's always been a couple here and there, colleges, travel, totally related, and some of those do revert back and get transferred over, especially if they're colleges, because that's the guidance now the last couple of weeks, is that the positive test in a college shouldn't count towards the town at which the parents live in. Uh, I would say primarily our cases are related to healthcare workers uh or those going to get testing before treatment. So if I was gonna go in and get tested for some sort of treatment, a lot of those end up being asymptomatic and not seeing those necessarily transferred. Other people may also be meaning a false positive or the the likelihood of asymptomatic transferring is a little bit less. We have, so we're getting sort of that sort of mix, and that's partly the same mix I said last week is what we've been getting. It's sort of been sort of similar. Uh, statewide, there's been a bit of an uptick. Um, so as far as cases, we're kind of, we're not in that, you know, less than five gray. We're in the green. Um, you know, surprisingly, we're out testing any other municipality on the Cape. We did two thousand and four tests. This would be from uh for two weeks, starting um this past Wednesday and the Wednesday before, because that gets updated every Wednesday. That's a thousand tests per week. So we are testing a lot, which is gonna lend itself to catching more asymptomatic and catching more cases nonetheless. So you know, it might be difficult, you know, and and it's good that we're testing. It doesn't sound like it's negative, but it tends to not want to get into the gray if we are testing a thousand people. It's gonna be really hard to stay under by total test in two weeks if we're cranking out a thousand tests a week. So so far as cases, it's sort of where we're at. Um, if you uh knew today that the high school was closed today, okay. Um, there was a party not linked, that party has not been linked to any particular case. It was, you know, essentially a violation of the gathering. No masks, let over fifty people. It's not in relation to a particular case, not at this point, hopefully not. Uh, and the school administration made a decision, uh, that they spoke with me and then later on made the decision, and they decided to close for the day, and we've talked it over today. Um, the police department um and the schools worked on getting a list of names. Uh, we've contacted the names. They're not technically quarantined because it's not related to any particular case, right? But um they were switched over to rem- uh over to remote learning uh out of abundance of caution. And, you know, those types of situations are going to occur, and they do take a lot of time. Oddly enough, we do get cases where there's a parent and we have to quarantine the kids. Those are actually quite easy and quite straightforward. Uh, these types of situations where there's a lot of um, you know, decision-making that's not part of the guidance as far as what to do, because the guidance, you know, you don't have a case, doesn't tell you to literally do anything. So um Lori and the school administration and myself have been working from since, you know, last night until today, you know, and working through that. So um, that situation occurred today and it's ongoing. Um, in terms of, you know, I'll ask you guys questions in a minute, but I do want to mention that we have a flu clinic. I just posted it on our website from on October twenty-sixth, from two to five at the Gus Canty. It's gonna be by appointment only. You'd call the Health Department at four and five oh eight four nine five seven four eight five, and we'll schedule you. And the reason being is it's a drive-through. You're not gonna need to get out of your car. We're gonna take care of it there. You know, it's, we can't have it too late, like after school, um, because there's always activities at the schools. The Gus Canty isn't huge for a parking lot, so we can, we can average about fifteen to twenty cars per every fifteen minutes, under my estimation. So we would do that by appointment. You would call the Health Department. We want you to pre-fill the consent form because that only clogs the lineup if you have to fill out the paperwork before you get to the nurse. You can get that online, download it, fill it out for each individual person. A husband and wife or a family can all come together. That makes it quicker. Um, and if you can't fill out that form or you don't have access to the computer, we can either mail one or help you fill it out, or we'll, we'll figure it out when you call us. Just let us know. We can even mail it to you. We can have copies here at Town Hall. Uh, again, and the rain date on that would be the following week, eleven-two. So November second would be a rain date, because it has to be, obviously, weather-dependent. We don't, we don't need a forty-five mile an hour wind and heavy rain. The nurses are not gonna be able to to handle that. So that's where we're at. Um, we just had a flu clinic, I think, um, you know, I think I talked to you the last week that we had one that we did about six hundred for the whole county. So um, this will be for only the single dose. We do not have any access to double dose at this point. VNA, you know, feels that the single dose is perfectly effective. Um, so with COVID and flu, that's what I've got, and I guess I'll open up to you guys for questions, because that's the easiest thing.
Thank you, Scott. Um, Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, do you have a direction of flow for this, for the queue, so to speak? Um, because I may can see you could back up on the Main Street quickly.
I'll have, I'll have two police details, okay? Talked to Chief Dunn already. They will come in on Main Street, snake, you know, sort of go down and snake so that you could fit fifteen, twenty cars easy. They're not gonna go out that exit, so they're gonna come down, because we like to have people remain for a few minutes to make sure that they don't have a reaction, especially those who have not had it before. Um, so the shots would be administered. This is my master plan, sort of our subject change. Is the three nurse stations would be at the roughly at the entrance to uh the the rec center. So you would snake them all the way to there. They would have it. They would go down to this about twenty parking spots down the hill on the side. They could wait there, and they would go out Dillingham. That would be the, that's my intent on doing it. Um, it that's, and then we'll see what we have for demand. Um, that would be able to us to handle a couple hundred. If we have more demand, I'll work on the VNA to have another clinic. Um, normally, our normal clinics are like a hundred to a hundred and fifty plus roughly. Um, this is obviously not a normal year, and some of the pharmacies are having a little trouble getting it, so there might be more demand. I purchase, well, the VNA purchases vaccines from the same locations. You know, there's not like a, you know, they don't give health departments priority on the flu's shot, so we have what we have for now. Okay, and then um we would, you know, do our best to obtain it later, because I think there's gonna be some demand, especially in December, because a requirement of schools is by January to get your flu shot. It may increase. Uh, the pediatricians, I don't know what's gonna happen. They may have trouble getting it as well. So it's gonna be, you know, get them if we can and go from there on that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Scott? Go ahead, Sam.
Yes, Scott, you said it's only gonna be the single dose and not the uh the larger dose that's recommended for seniors like me. Um, so you said, because of supply, or is that?
It's a supply issue right now, but it's also the VNA, N- VNA, who's our, our, that's who we hire, it's who we have a contract with. Feel that it's, that it's very effective to do the quadrivalent, which is uh four varieties of the flu. Uh, is the double dose, uh, for example, the county only had a hundred and twenty. Um, and the line out onto six A from the county complex by six AM or at eight o'clock, flu clinic was already out onto the street. It's just really hard to get it right now. Um, if I have, you know, the ability to get it, then we can talk, you know, at that point. Um, but I think you're gonna do fine with the single dose uh quadrivalent uh one. So, yeah, there's been, there's been some difficulty getting the double dose. We normally do not do the double dose on our flu clinics.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Scott? Okay, thank you very much, Scott. We appreciate it. Um, are you sticking around to tell us about the status, or Julian, are you gonna talk about the status of the municipal beach parking?
Uh, I am going to.
Thank you, Scott, very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, I wanted to advise that I've asked Public Works Director Peter McConerty to begin to remove the uh remaining barriers in the municipal beach parking lots uh during this month of October so that we can uh expand the capacity fundamentally for residents who uh fre- frequently like to come to the beach, and during this offseason, we want to accommodate them as much as possible. We know that they were significantly inconvenienced uh during the past uh season, given the limitations uh due to due to the COVID pandemic. And I just wanted to advise that that process will begin and be continuing over the next few weeks. It uh has to be worked in as the Public Works work schedule permits. Uh, but that's been uh anticipated, and we thank residents for their patience during this most challenging uh season. And uh in a way, certainly, we uh, we are thankful as residents are that the beaches are not as crowded now and a little bit more available uh for uh their use and enjoyment.
Thank you. Um, and and just a quick, you know, obviously, as Scott points out, we are not out of the woods. We have a lot of things to consider as the weather changes, but I just wanted to take a pause. Well, we're sort of officially at the end of, I know no one wants to hear it, but the summer season. Um, and just note that, um, you know, all things considered, I think we had a pretty successful management of um this crisis throughout the summer. There were a lot of people in town. Um, I think, you know, we were able to avoid what many of us, as particularly as this board, we talked about, which was that surge, really afraid of what happened when that many people came into town and while people were out socializing. Um, so, you know, I'm just thankful that that took place and that we can go into this next challenge, at least with that um a bit of a foundation. We, we kind of know what works, just in terms of being vigilant about that, the mask and the social distancing, and hopefully we can encourage folks to keep that up as we go forward. And hopefully we can encourage folks to keep that up as we go forward. Because as Scott notes, um you know, those are some of the highest numbers that we've had. The numbers that we're having right now that we've had in quite a while. So definitely want to just be. You know, celebrate some of the success and then continue to try and do what worked.
I mentioned that I see across the country that there are. Urban areas and communities that are suddenly spiking back up into the red zone because people are dropping their guard and going back to. So-called normal. Uh so we just need to be vigilant in practice, wearing those masks and keeping that social distance. Whenever we're out of our normal, safe cohorts and basically our families.
I think it's also could be attributed to the increased testing, but we have to continue that. We need to know where we're at. So. The numbers go up, it's just reality.
Doug Jones?
I want to compliment uh the town residents. You drive down Main Street, you dive down Water Street in Wits Hole. And you can't find someone not wearing a mask. You might someone who's dropped off to have something to drink, but everybody has one with them. They're really respecting each other, respecting our requests or the uh. The mask mandatory area. And it's just, it's really reassuring that we can now open the beach parking lots and know. People are gonna go to the beach, but still respect our expectations of wearing masks and uh social distancing.
Great point.
Here, here.
Thank you. Um okay, next we have um a presentation on the new skate park and playground at Fuller Field. So if we can. Seeing what else I skipped here. I think I see Joe coming in and Keith. Andy, whole bunch of folks here. Welcome, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. Let us wait till I, I see Sandy trying to come on. Great. So who is going to kick off this presentation for this? Amazing park that I was just at this weekend that was getting so much good use on Saturday, which was absolutely just the most beautiful day. And there are folks of all ages, from people on roller skates, which was so great to see, um to bikes and everything else. What a great spot. So who wants to sort of walk us through? Joe, are you taking the lead?
I'll take the lead and uh give you a little bit of background on it. And um, yeah, you were right. I've been up there a couple times long before it was even open. And it was just really, really, really busy. Um kids loved it. That's all thanks to um Keith Bliler, who actually got this project started roughly long before I was even assistant director, like. Ten, eleven, twelve years ago. You know, his hard work and his determination, get something for his kids. Um get this whole project rolling and multiple times through town meeting and CPC and. Uh few other uh fundraising events. Um this project was able to um finally finished. Uh minus a couple of, you know, uh landscaping and other issues in the spring that we'll be able to get to. But um I think I'll turn it over to Keith because he was the, the main instigator in this whole thing and he's the one that relates it. Go ahead, Keith. Tell us a little bit about yourself and uh how you get this project moving.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I'll, I'll just be real brief. I mean, I've, I've probably come in front of the uh Board of Selectmen. In fact, I don't think any of the current Board of Selectmen were present when I started the whole process to get permission just to start fundraising back in two thousand and seven. And uh I mean, I can't, can't begin to tell you all the hurdles and, and delays that have, that we've been able to overcome. But I really just wanted to thank everybody that uh that, that was uh, you know, an ally in this project. It was uh, it was worth sticking with it and um the um. Excuse me one second.
It's like live action.
I'm glad that's all it was.
So uh, yeah, I mean, it's been a lot of uh work. It required uh, you know. Hundreds and hundreds of little individual steps to kind of get everything done. You know, the, the project would not have been uh possible without the help of uh. Sandy Cuney of Together We Can, who was kind of like my. Uh bulldog there in uh Town Hall and uh through with the CPC and, and getting the uh project done. Uh and then the other uh, you know, the, the saving grace was uh teaming up with uh Randy Harnoy of All Cape. Recycling um right next to Mahoney's, uh the, the wood chip guy, the shells and uh loam guy. Uh who really kind of did this for about half the price of what the other contractors were asking. And then working with the folks at the D P W who have been absolutely incredible and, you know, shepherding this through the whole bid process. Jim McLaughlin, Chris Bennett. I, I just can't begin to thank. And then, you know, the big thanks goes to the people, the town of Falmouth that. You know, really stood by me and uh, you know, put forth the vote um for the uh. The funding or the final funding of the skate park and raising the last bit of money we did. I, it's, it's really, this is. Not my effort. This is really a, a town and a community effort. And uh I, I can't be happier with the way this has turned out if it, you know, those of you have already been down to the skate park to see it. Can, can see for themselves. I think it is the single. Most used piece of Falmouth recreational space in the entire town. I think it gets more use than any other. I mean, I would, maybe the beaches, but other than that, um it's, it's just turned out wonderful. So I, I. I want to thank everybody involved. It's been a long turning.
Thank you. Yes, it, it has. Thank you, Keith. And um I don't know what you're talking about with Sandy Cuney being a bulldog. That's so unlike her. It's such a sweet pushover, so I don't know who they're talking about, but um. Uh what a, just really what a wonderful um asset for the town. And Sandy, did you want to just say anything about it or?
Unmute, Sandy.
I had to unmute. The only thing I would like to say is when you say the town effort, it goes back to the early nineteen ninety's. From Falmouth Together We. Next to the rec center. And then the town appropriated the money with the help of everybody. Build the first skate park and trotting field, park fields. So when Keith wanted to make the. Bigger and better and state-of-the-art skate park, um it's just been a continuation of many, many years. Uh Falmouth residents want it. So it took a long time, but uh here we are and I'm very proud of it. Like my grandkids enjoyed it last week. So I thank everyone. I'd like to hear an update um from the town on when they're gonna sign off on it and where we're at.
Excellent. Good segue. Um Peter, are you on? Because you're walking us through this?
Well, no, Jim McLaughlin has some, uh has a slide presentation just to uh show some photos of the, of the park for those who have not been able to. To get there. Uh the, I, and I believe that we're, you know, we're ready to go. I think the only thing that. Remains is a sign, but I'd be happy to hand off to Jim to take it from here.
Thank you. Welcome, Jim. Thank you. If you want to put the slides up.
Sure. Okay, is that the, people see that?
Not yet. Excuse me. Here it comes.
Okay, thank you. Uh James McLaughlin, town engineer. So the, the new park is shaded in red here. It's at the Trotty Park Fields. Uh adjacent to the uh existing park. And the first. First slide is, this, this is the, one of the contract drawings. Uh there's about twenty-five drawings in the, the contract set. But the, the, the features of the, the park that are probably the most significant are a bowl. Feature over here on the, on the left of the west side. And then this section here is uh. Believe what they call a street-type features with uh railings and stairs and things like that, ramps. And the, and the existing park is right here and there's a sidewalk connection to the, to the new park. And the reason that I wanted to point out uh on this slide here would, these curvilinear lines at the rear of the site. Are uh con- proposed contour lines and they indicate a fill of about ten feet in the, in the rear. So this. This portion of the property dropped off quite a bit and required a, a fair amount of fill. So one of the first things that we did was uh do a lot of soil testing after the site was prepared. To make sure that uh it was compacted properly and could support the uh concrete for the park itself. And this is a photograph of the railing. You can see there's a lot of curves and uh both horizontally and vertical. Uh so kind of a tricky setup to get that in place. And that's for the, the bowl feature here. And uh so that was one of the first things that was set up. And as, as Keith mentioned, the uh contract doing all the site work was uh R and H, Randy Harnoy and um. The general contractor was from uh Virginia and the specialty contractor, which did the, the concrete work. Was from uh North Carolina. And these firms really travel all around North America. Installing these skate parks. There's uh probably a little more than half a dozen of these type of companies. And we're fortunate to get uh. Get um this particular contractor and, and as Keith mentioned. In large part due to the uh contributions that Randy made for uh his work at a, at a really reduced rate. Um and this is the, the crew doing some formwork here in the bowl area. Uh again, there's a lot of curves and uh twists and turns for the bowl and it's a lot of uh. Lot of intricate work in terms of the formwork. Here's the crew installing uh some of the concrete. It's, it's reinforced steel below and they place it with shotcrete. And then uh there's a lot of. Heavy uh intense labor to, to finish it off and get everything smoothed out in the, in the concrete uh. Set just the right way, especially with uh these curves and humps and, and it's a lot of intricate uh handwork that uh they do. This is a photograph of uh after a significant rainstorm, we wanted to make sure that uh there were no puddles. And that uh things were working properly and of, of course they were. And here's a photograph of uh someone making the daring plunge into the, into the bowl. Couple of weeks ago. And this is the, the finished park. You can see just up on the, the side here, there's a. R and H has a piece of equipment here. They're doing some final landscaping. Uh this was last week. And uh that's really what's, what's remaining is getting the grass to, to grow with the final uh. The final uh work at the, at the park. It's, it's virtually complete, other than getting some uh. Some vegetation go, get going along these areas here. This is again indicative of the fill off the back. As I said, this goes down about uh about ten feet before it matches up with the original grade. And. That I think is it for the, the slides. And as, as, again, as Keith and, and Sandy and, and Joe have all mentioned. It's really a lot of work from a lot of people involved. And uh we just administered the contract at the end here, so. Glad that it's basically completed at this point in time and uh seems to be getting a lot of use.
Jim, as to Sandy Cuney's question, is there any reason not to encourage folks to come and start skating on the park? I know some have already.
No, at this point in time, uh it's, it's, it is complete. The signage is up. The uh, we installed the. Handicap parking space down at the uh existing gravel lot. Now there's a, there's a concrete uh. Uh spot for uh accessibility and the walkway up is all uh handicap accessible. So it's uh ready to go.
Great, thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Sandy, go ahead.
I have a question for everybody. I, I know that we had to take some shortcuts along the way. Falmouth Together We Can has seven thousand five hundred dollars from the Tony Hawk Foundation. That was to be donated to the skate park uh towards construction. And I know that construction isn't ended. And I know that there's more that we can do. So Falmouth Together We Can would like to know how we can. Give the town this money, seven thousand five hundred more to help finish. Anything we need to do. And so I'm looking for how to do that.
Peter, do you want to comment on that at all? Is there?
Yes, I, I'd be happy to. And uh this is off the top of my head, so um it, it take that for what it is worth. You know, I don't think the seven thousand five hundred is enough to expand on the facility itself. So one thought that you might consider would be to make a donation that could go toward a maintenance fund. So that we have the ability to keep it in, in good shape. You know, address any repairs that, that might be needed.
Okay, I do believe the Tony Hawk Foundation was for construction. So if it can be counted towards construction and you can take some of that money that you have and put it towards it. It has to go for the skate park, nothing else.
Julian, I, I see.
If we can work that out, that'd be great.
Yeah, Julian?
I'm, I'm confident we can work that out. We'll uh. Work with Finance Director Jennifer Mullin in the direction you talked about, Andy, and uh we'll be in touch as to how that can be consummated.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And Keith, Keith, if you, you know, have any thoughts about even if it's, you know, a little bit of the last finishing touches of. Landscaping or other, you know, I don't know, sometimes even seating or benches or whatever it might be. Maybe we can just think about what that space. Could be benefited by. Great, thank you, Sandy. Doug Brown?
Maybe you could uh install a water station.
It would probably cost about that much to run a, a pipe from wherever the closest water is, so.
Yeah, we talked about it with Steve Rafferty last year and uh there's a dead end at the condo development across from Goodwill Park. He would love to see that connected around and uh it would be a, a benefit to the residents in that area as well.
Great, okay, so some thoughts there. Thank you, Sandy, for reminding us of that, for those funds remaining. Anything else? Other than to, to really hope folks come and utilize this. Yes, Doug Brown?
I had a question for Dr. Bliler. I was looking at the photos and uh a couple of years ago, while I was uh. Working on a house over in Sipewis, at a young man, I think maybe your son, do you like uh have a landscaping truck or just a friend of the park? Some young guy came over and said, hey, are you gonna use that railing? Because we took a railing off an old set of stairs. And I said, I don't have any plans for it. And he goes, do you mind if I take it? We could use that at the skate park. And it looks a lot like the. One that's in there. I wonder if it actually did get reused in there. Do you know that?
I think that railing's at my house somewhere. Waiting for the.
Skate park in his backyard, his dad's backyard.
All right, waiting for the next park.
That's great. Thank you, everyone, so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joe?
You're muted, Megan.
I'm sorry. I keep muting myself because Simone gave me her cold and I keep coughing, so I'm, I apologize. Is Joe going to give us an update on the Fuller Field Playground?
Certainly will.
Go ahead.
Um one thing we looked, you know, once we decided, you know, we were gonna move forward with the construction. There were several factors we were trying to look for to, to make sure that, you know, we're in this playground. One foremost for me was safety of everybody on the playground um from the baseball field, from the Commodores. As they can certainly hit the ball uh quite a ways. So we looked into building a um twenty-foot fence. On the right field side of the, the playground uh to protect anybody from uh getting hit with baseballs. So we accomplished that and by the looks of it, if anybody hits the ball over that, then um they should definitely be in the major leagues. And then we also looked for um safety on falling and that came with um the port in place surfacing. Which is like walking on a cloud if you walk on, if you haven't been on it, it's a great surface if it's fall. We're also looking for some inclusive equipment, which we got with merry-go-round wheelchair accessible, spinny, I'll call it a spinny thing because it's kind of fun to stand on and spin around and watching the kids and, and they love to play on it. And the last thing we were really looking for was swings, because we didn't have swings in the last playground. And we have a handicap accessible swing in there as well, as well as infant swings. So we're pretty excited about that. And to help us along with the whole project with obviously Peter's smarts and brains that helped us with it was a playground consultant Nancy White. Who was very instrumental in helping us pick out the equipment and projects and, and order the way we needed to do stuff. And if you haven't seen it, it's an amazing playground, kids on it every day, little kids, big kid.
Looks great, Jim, are you able to advance? Because we're still looking at the pictures of the skate park. I'm wondering if you have the.
There we go.
Okay. Yep.
Up now?
Yep, so if you keep going from there. Yep.
So the, again, the red is the new playground area. And this is from an aerial when the senior center was still under construction. And the reason that I wanted, I did want to point out that in this area here behind center field, at Fuller Field is the old grandstand. And that was part of this project, the highway and parks departments removed the grandstand. And demoed this whole area and then loomed and seeded this area. And then as far as the playground itself, they also prepared the site and brought it down to grade and had it available for the contractor. So that when they started work, everything was ready to go. And this is what it looked like when we turned it over to the contractor on July 9th. You'll see in the back here are all the, the crates. All the equipment was pre-ordered and had been delivered to the DPW facility, so. What the day that the contractor started, he went down, picked up everything and the site was there ready for them to start work. And so as I mentioned, they started on, on the 9th. And on the 10th, they had most of the structures in place. And then this particular one Joe mentioned is the merry-go-round or the turning feature. And the reason I, I point this out is that all the mechanisms and everything are low grade. And basically this is an at-grade type structure as opposed to the type that most of us are familiar with where, you know, you'd run around a trough and jump on after you got it going. So the next step after all the playground features were installed was the installation of this rubberized mat surface that is again similar to the skate pack, very labor intensive. It's all put down by hand and trowelled out. And once it's complete, they went back and applied a, a final layer of color to the, to the entire surface. And again, this is that same merry-go-round type playground fixture. And you can see that it's basically at-grade and anyone can get on and, and spin around on it. The, this is the final surface after a week or two that it's cured. And as Joe mentioned, it's got a lot of bounce to it. It's about six, six or so inches of rubberized material. That's both pervious and has a lot of, lot of flexibility as you, as you walk on it. And it's all designed for the, the various heights of the structures and the, in the fall potential and being able to absorb, absorb the falls. This is one of the, the play structures that's an accessible type feature. And as Joe mentioned, the swings again, accessible swing and the infant swings and the normal swing type swing as well. And that's, that's what it looks like. We still have to go back to parks department, you can see in the back here, there's some sandy material, we still have to go back and loom and seed that. And but other than that, the playground is up and running and again, getting a lot of use just as the skate parks.
Thank you very much Jim, thank you Joe, any questions? Wow, what a beautiful, what a really beautiful project, Joe?
I just want to mention one more thing, the playground surface was made much, you know, easier to accomplish with a generous donation from the road race to help defer some of the cost of that. And without that, we probably would not have been able to afford the whole playground surface like that. Just a generous donation by them to, to help us accomplish that.
And, and thank you, and just to remind folks that that surface doesn't just make it safer when kids fall, but it really makes it accessible. Wood chips are not accessible if you have mobility issues. You know, even if you're not in a wheelchair but just have a difficulty, you know, walking or using other types of aids. Wood chips are just really challenging, so this is just a beautiful addition to that space. Any other questions from the board? I can't see everybody because we're in this mode, so if you do, go ahead.
I have a question if.
Yep, go ahead Doug.
I think my computer's freezing.
I can hear you Doug.
Am I still coming through over there?
Yes, we can hear you.
I think I was frozen for a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
On the question of accessibility, do we have an accessible path down to this complete?
Yes, there is, the asphalt path that goes from the, the playground to the parking lot.
Great, is there any need to, to install edging or is, I just can't see it in the picture? Is there an edging where the grass meets the court?
Right now it's all just open dirt because the DPW has not finished grading everything up. But I believe on parts of that, that's going to be the case of reseed and loom. And the part along the high fence, we still have to maneuver the track. We're going to try to remove, maneuver the track around the, the playground to keep the circular track going without them walking into the paved road as it used to be.
I mean, where, where the, where the surface meets the grass, is there like an edging type of material? Or is it just the grass runs right up to the material?
Kim, could you show us one of those photos of the edge?
What's brought up till the grade?
I guess this is probably as, as good a, good a depiction as we have. So what happens is this is elevated a little bit on the edge here Doug and then the fencing itself acts as, as a barrier to, to separate out the playground from what eventually be a, a grass surface here on the other side.
Right, but is there an edging material that goes along at the edge of where the court ends and the grass begins? Is there some type of material?
So this is ramped up, it's about a 12 inch section here, most of, most of the material in the, in the center of the playground itself is four to six inches, but along the edges it's eight to 12 inches.
Okay.
So it's a little bit raised up, but it's not, it's not a curve, but it, it is raised up a little bit. And the, the idea is that the fencing acts as the real barrier to anything leaving the site.
Okay.
And, and I didn't mention, but this, maybe I did, this surface is permeable, so the water just goes right through.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you Jim.
Madam Chair, if I may? Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to add that we have spoken with Jeremiah Pearson about a landscaping plan. So there will be some plantings to provide some, some shade and some wind covering. And frankly, that may be a, you know, really a two-year project. We're hoping to get some plantings in this fall. But as, as funding allows, we also have spoken to Jeremiah about bringing some trees in. So that ultimately we can get some natural shade to help keep the playground a little cooler.
There's your construction funding for the, oh, that was the other part, nevermind.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Sandy, did you want to say something?
I, I just wanted to say as a member of the Recreation Committee, we were still looking at a big picture out there. And I know that we talked about trees and maybe a picnic table and, and redoing the track. And the Recreation Committee hasn't yet seen a final plan of what we're doing, but we're in the process of, of creating something beautiful out there, because when the senior center opens, we want to have something for everybody. But that playground is absolutely awesome.
It really is, and just such a, you know, such a nice and just improved place for kids to play when families, when we get back to being able to enjoy baseball. It's nice to have that for kids and obviously to use it in the interim. Any other questions from the board? I can't, as I said, I can't see everybody, if you have a question, just jump in. Okay? Otherwise, thank you Joe, Jim, thank you Sandy.
Thank you.
Thanks guys. We'll see you soon.
Very nice, thanks.
Okay, excuse me, next we have presentation and discussion of proposed job description for the diversity coordinator position. And notice of opening of the public comment period. So just a reminder that during our April town meeting that took place, the section of it that took place over the summer. There was a vote of town meeting to create a new position and, excuse me, in that position subsequent to town meeting, we've been working on a job description and both the school and the town have been working on that. Denise Coleman who's with us tonight and Joannie Santa for the school department, along with superintendent, myself, Julian, Peter, and some weigh-in from, we took basically what the proposal was from Sandy Famon Silva and, and folks from affirmative action. Started to work on it and what we wanted to do was give an update where that stands, share a draft of it for some input, input from the board and then also notifying the public that we're opening it up for a period of time to garner some public comment and input about this, you know, are we, are we missing some important things? Do we need to tweak it so that we can at the end of the day have, in school, the school committee is mirroring, they've actually started their process already, doing it the same way, opening it up for public comment. But at the end of the day, hopefully we have a job description that best encompasses what town meeting's objective was and what we really need within the community, so that's why we're here tonight, so we're not voting on anything final tonight. We're just having the discussion and I think Denise, are you going to walk us through?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
So Denise Coleman, HR Director for the town, I'm pleased to be able to present this job description. And by way of background, if you recall, as Megan mentioned, town meeting did agree to fund the newly created diversity coordinator position in June. It's unique in that it will support both the school and the town. And it's just as a note, it was funded through free cash. So I am pleased to be able to show you the job description. I'm going to share the screen right now, if you just bear with me for a moment. Okay, so then the formal title of this position is Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. What I am suggesting is that we open this job description up for review for a public comment period of 30 days. And I'm suggesting that we have the feedback go to the town manager's email address with a copy to the select board. And then what we could do is after the 30-day period, compile all the information and come up with suggested revision. And so the position is responsible for really serving several purposes. And that is to provide professional support, problem solving and outreach in the areas of diversity, equity and inclusion. The position will be responsible for liaising with local citizens, government branches, civic organizations and other organizations. Coordinating the development of programs, workshops, educational materials and activities relating to diversity. And developing outreach plans. And other activities aimed to foster a wider understanding of diversity, a culture of respect and tolerance. And the building of cross-group encounters in Falmouth and all other related responsibilities as outlined in the job description.
Slow down a little bit Denise, just so far. I know we have it in front of us, but.
Yep, so what I just reviewed was the definition, which is here on the top. And then I've, I've just outlined several essential functions and responsibilities. And so, you know, I mentioned serving as a diversity, equity and inclusion liaison with local citizens, government branches and civic organizations. And other organizations as appropriate. I think what really is a good bullet to focus on would be coordinating and or assisting with the development of programs, workshops, educational materials, educational activities, meeting, consultations and other activities aims to foster wider understanding of affirmative action and diversity. And hold on one moment. I'm just going to stop sharing for a moment. Make sure that I have the right job description up here. Hold on one moment.
I think you do, I think it looks like it's missing part of it.
Yeah, there for some reason this is missing part of it, but I guess what I wanted to do is put this up for public comment. So that, you know, there's important stakeholders that would want to review the job description, have the opportunity to provide input, namely, you know, the, I think of the affirmative action committee as well as other key stakeholders. And by putting it up there, I think we should get a good amount of feedback that we really are looking for at this point.
Great, thank you Denise. I'm sorry everyone, excuse me, any thoughts or questions for Denise at this point in time?
Great start.
Thank you.
And Denise, when, just so that the public knows, where will they find this in order to read it and then, you know, comment on it?
So we were going to put this on the town manager's select board's website page. And so you'll see the job description that you'll be able to click on. And then it will say in the body of the job description where to send the feedback, which would be both, we figured the town manager's office as well as the select board. So that everyone involved can, can look at those, that feedback.
Great, and I might, I know we had talked a little bit about this. If members of the board at some point, if you think about any sort of constituent groups or communities that we should really specifically reach out to and make sure they're seeing this. Please let Denise know or, you know, copy me on it so that we can make sure that we're getting as much feedback as possible. Obviously if folks aren't watching this tonight, or they're not really tuned in because they've got a million other things going on. They may not even know to go to the website to comment on it, so I think we really want to make sure we're getting, you know, being proactive about reaching out. So, you know, make some suggestions, send them to Denise and send them to me so that we can make sure that we get as much feedback as possible.
Great.
Megan, did you see the chat there, a question from Sandy Famon Silva? Asking, is there going to be a different comment period for the select board, town managers and school committee? If so, this will be confusing.
Yes, so the school committee has, because this is a joint, a position that will be sort of under the umbrella of each, you know, the, the town and the school department. The school committee has to do a similar process to what we're doing right now. So they have in fact already started this process. And they have talked about this, I believe, is that correct Denise, or are they doing that at their next meeting?
They have started the process.
They have started the process, but you know what, obviously this has been a joint effort, that the, all the work has been done jointly. So what will happen is if people are kind of queued in and they're watching and they're real, you know, maybe they have school-aged children and so they're really paying attention more to school committee than the select board, we're going to capture a different audience there. And so the goal is to have as much of a broad outreach as possible. We will consolidate all of those comments. So if it's a comment that comes by way of the school committee, we'll get those. And so I do think that, you know, it has to happen on both fronts. And we'll leave it open for the same, they're doing the same 30 day comment period. I'm just looking at. Okay, I'm just going to read quickly a comment from Megan Hennewalt, who is Chair of the Affirmative Action Diversity Committee. And they are saying they've created a subcommittee to work specifically on this. And they are reaching out to members of the community. And we would like the ai@falmouthmass.gov email address to, oh, they're asking for the comments as well. I think what we'll do is we'll forward them, collect them all and forward them in bulk onto the affirmative action committee. Because we'll consolidate whatever we get through the school committee as well. Does that sound reasonable? Everyone?
Yes.
No problem, Megan. We all have typos. You're doing it fast. So she was worried about her typos. So at any rate, we really hope folks take a look at this. This is a very important position, probably no more, you know, this is a time when it's probably as important as it ever will be. So we really want folks to look at it, see if we've missed the mark, see if we can improve it. And again, I ask from, from this board, I ask you to please let us know who, to whom we can really specifically make outreach to get this out to them. Okay, if you think of folks. Great. Thank you very much, Denise. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And that should be going up, you think, tomorrow?
Yes, that will go up tomorrow.
Great. Julian, did you want to comment? Or are we just saying bye to Denise?
Only, only to say thank you to all for the diligent work on moving this forward.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, next we have presentation discussion. And I'm going to say here, it's set on the agenda, a vote for the Mayflower Wind Access Agreement for 565 Blacksmith Shop Road, Zero Surf Drive, and Zero Grand Avenue. But we are, what I'd like to suggest is that, and Julian, do you want to just speak to the vote issue? I think we had, you and I had talked about it. I don't know if it went out to the board.
Yes, just to confirm with the, the board, we had placed this on the agenda as an anticipated item on which to vote. Unfortunately, all of the information was not received timely by town council in order for a thorough and comprehensive review to be completed in advance of the select board's packet being transmitted on Friday, as it is as per standard procedure. So this will be a presentation only this evening, and the board can consider taking a vote on this as you deem appropriate at your next meeting later in October.
Great, thank you. Once we have the, the full weigh in from town council.
Correct.
Welcome, Mr. Pizoni.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much, members of the select board, and Mr. Souza and Mr. Johnson, stop. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
All right, very good. I want to thank you first of all for allowing us to move forward with the presentation. With me tonight to present and respond and answer any questions you may have, Lydia Loeston of Onshore, she's the head of onshore transmission and the project manager, and Chris Hardy, who is the manager of external outreach and communication. Before you were three access agreements for three different sites. They're basically for unobtrusive, the preliminary unobtrusive engineering, environmental, and biological review and studies required for these sites to determine adequacy. The sites are the 565 Blacksmith Shop Road site, which is your yard waste and compost site. That would be for a substation site, which is one of the locations we're looking at within Falmouth. The other two sites that are before you tonight are the Surf Drive and Grand Ave parking lot areas at the beaches at Surf Drive and Grand Ave, which is Falmouth Heights. I just want to point out that these are for preliminary testing that's going to be required in order to work openly and cooperatively with the community, and that they are not very obtrusive. They're not, these agreements aren't a commitment to proceed with the Mayflower project. We want to make sure everybody understands that because it's just to provide preliminary information so that we can all take the first steps to discuss, discuss whether or not this is appropriate, where we're proposing it, and to reanalyze the potential site and project component sites of the project. With that, I'll introduce Chris Hardy. And Chris, if you could walk us through the presentation, it'll tell you a little bit about Mayflower and the project sites that we're talking about. Chris?
Great. I'm just checking that you can hear me and that you can see slideshow on the screen.
Yes, on both accounts.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for the introduction, Bill. As Bill mentioned, my name is Chris Hardy. I'm the external outreach for manager for Mayflower Wind. As by way of background, Mayflower Wind is a 50/50 joint venture. We're backed by two leading energy companies, Shell and EDP Renewables. We are guided by core values that include lasting community partnerships. And since our last presentation before the select board in March, Mayflower Wind has been conducting a variety of baseline surveys and investigations to inform the project's design and planning. This included sea grass surveys over the summer. So I want to thank the Conservation Commission, the Beach Commission, and the Harbor Master for their cooperation over the course of the summer in completing those surveys. And as, as Bill mentioned, tonight, we're here to discuss some potential locations as we cite the project facilities and to request the select board's consent to enter some of those properties to conduct surveys. Advance the next slides, excuse me. So at, at a high level, the wind turbines, the interarray cables, the offshore electric substation that you see represented on the schematic would be located in the federal outer continental shelf lease area about 30 miles south of Martha's Vineyard and 23 miles south of Nantucket. And the submarine export cables marked here in green would run north through Mesquita Channel and west towards Vineyard Sound before making landfall in Falmouth. And an underground electric cable would connect power to an onshore substation also located in Falmouth. And then the overhead transmission lines would extend from that substation to a new switching station in Bourne where it would interconnect into the regional grid. And tonight, we're here to discuss the landfall and the onshore components of the schematic. Advance the next slide. So as Bill had referenced, there are two parcels where we're looking to conduct geotechnical investigations at Surf Drive Beach and Falmouth Beach. And we are seeking the right to enter the properties to conduct some of these surveys. The, the agreement that we're seeking is a temporary, non-exclusive, there's no obligation. And the Falmouth Conservation Commission issued a negative determination of applicability earlier, or I should say, at the end of last month. And so the limited geotechnical boring investigations that we are considering here are to support, you know, the further design of the potential landing of those export cable that I referenced. And we will employ all of the best management practices and management procedures during the boring operations to minimize any disturbances. There would be two boreholes in paved parking lots at the beaches. Each borehole would take approximately three days, and that includes some of the borehole restoration. And then we would work the town to restore the surface using coal patching around the pavement area that's been disturbed. The image that you see on the right was drawn from the Comcast EverSource Hybrid Cable Project, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, that was recently constructed to extend cable service from Falmouth to Tisbury. And so we utilize this image as an illustrative of what we're seeking to accomplish because the process and the method is, is very similar in this situation.
Can I interrupt to mention?
Yes.
Negative finding by the Conservation Commission basically means that Mayflower Wind is not required to submit a full detailed application for this project. They, they found it basically to be de minimis.
Correct. And the, the second property, other than the, the potential landfall locations that we want to discuss, is a potential onshore substation location at 565 Blacksmith Shop Road. We are exploring several alternative locations and evaluating the specific equipment needs to produce and refine the civil and electric layouts for what the substation might look like. And I want to state that this is just one site that's of potential interest, that there have been no final decisions on any sites for a substation and won't be until we've been able to complete a full analysis of the alternatives. And in order to conduct that analysis, you know, we need to gather different information, data on site that can be fed into our analytical method and enable us to avoid and minimize any potential impacts to the developed and natural environment. And of course, when you look at this particular site, you can see that there's existing compost area. There's wetlands in zone two, drinking water resources to the east. There's forested areas throughout, and then of course, there are adjacent properties to the south and southeast. And so, you know, we are committed to continue to work with the town and the community cooperatively throughout this whole development process and the siting process. I want to talk to you a little bit more about some of the considerations that go into this evaluation. So as I said before, you know, some of the key considerations are to minimize the environmental impacts, minimize the, you know, impacts to the local neighborhood and community. And how do we do about, how do we go about doing that? We try to utilize previously disturbed areas. We try to avoid or minimize the impacts to those sensitive environmental resources and cultural resources. We try to be accessible to the public roads, conform to local zoning, maintain distances from adjacent properties, and then utilize some of the natural existing vegetation as well as other potential mitigation measures that might be needed for noise or visual reductions. And so that the surveys that we're seeking permission to, to conduct are, again, to, to conduct base, to gather baseline data that can be refined upon further analysis. Many of these surveys are seasonally dependent and time sensitive. And so that's why, you know, we're here before the, the ground, you know, starts to freeze in a, in a few, in a few months. So we're looking at, you know, particularly with some of the vegetation, you know, about to, to change foliage and, and the trees to, to lose some of their leaves, and you know, that impacts some of the results of the test. But again, this similar right of entry agreement, there's no obligation, it's temporary, it has a 180 degree term. And we are committed to collaborating with the town on all of the test and equipment locations and providing advance notice to the town prior to entry. With that, I'd like to just welcome your feedback and your questions.
Thank you very much. And just to, you know, really highlight the point that both Mr. Pizoni and you made, that this is really, you know, this is the very first step. We had a lot of concerns, and I know sometimes when people see agenda items, it looked like we were maybe a different place in the process. And so I, you know, I understand that concern. We received lots of emails from folks who thought we were sort of at that final step of making a final agreement. And I just want to clarify, not at all what this is. You know, there would always be a lot of public, opportunity for public input, but before any type of vote like that would be held. So this is really, as you both noted, kind of a feasibility portion of taking a look at these spots and is in no way a final determination. Any comments or questions from the board? Go ahead, Doug Jones, and then I saw Doug Brown.
I guess one question, one comment. The question would be, you would only be using one of the two landfall sites. You wouldn't be using both. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
The second is, as Megan said, this is a process. When we came back later, you would be explaining to us exactly what kind of power core the, what kind of power be transmitted in it, what are the safety ramifications of power going under a property that way? That would be something we'd be hearing in a much later presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I would like to point out that we have to provide for the FSD alternative routes to get the power to the point of distribution. So we have to show them and lay out to them a couple of different routes. And ultimately, we pick the one that is best, both from an environmental standpoint, a community disturbance standpoint, you know, we want to make sure that we're taking the project along the route that works for everybody, including the developer, but also within the community. And yes, we would be coming back with much more extreme detail later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Brown?
I'd really like to see what the proposal would be before we even go too far. I mean, I'm kind of more interested to know that 95 acre site where our leaf dump is, I think would make a potentially a good site for a compost facility that could serve our town. I'm also very interested to learn about the possibility of the electromagnetic induction from the substation and how much area around it does it take out of service other than just the footprint? And I'm also interested to know about that same effect of the electricity running underneath the beach. And is there emissions that are, could be harmful to people on the beach? So I'm really interested to learn more before we really get too far down the road. I know this is preliminary for you, but it's, it's actually for us, we should be informed before we take any steps.
Well, we, we can't provide you that information until we really kind of know where we're headed, whether or not the site is appropriate. And like I said, this is just preliminary. If we find that the site is appropriate, we will obviously have to provide all that information to you. I would point out, I did see a lot of articles about EMF and scientific studies. And actually, there's a new study released this past spring that talks about this certain, certain thresholds that you can't go over. And we plan to, you know, stay within that mark, do whatever mitigation we need to. But before we can even get to that step, we have to look at, let's say, beach area. Is this the right place for man, are we going to be able to come underground? And obviously, the public health and safety issues are going to have to be addressed.
Yeah. And the, the studies, investigations, just to reiterate that Bill mentioned, are, are built to helping us provide the level of detail that you're seeking. So, you know, these baseline surveys enable us to get data that help analyze and refine our design and permitting, or our, our design and planning rather. So to be able to answer your, your questions, we actually need to conduct some of this type of survey work first.
Right. But the thing is, why spend money on all this planning if we don't think it's an appropriate site? I mean, we haven't really considered that yet. We're just going forward, assuming that it makes sense to you because Shore Street is there. You know what I mean? I, I just feel like, I, I don't understand why we couldn't get more information upfront. Whether or not that site is the one that gets used or another site, the information remains the same. Correct?
Well, the, the physical structure and the build and the different components could be a little different. That design aspect of it hasn't been reached yet. And, and that's why we, we, we go into this preliminarily, do some, you know, quick dashboard work. Then we look at and go a little deeper, do some minor engineering work. And once we get to that level, we can then formulate, you know, the information that, that you were looking for and provide it to you in, in a realistic manner, rather than kind of guessing that, what if we build it this way? This is what you're going to see. Well, what if we build it that way? This is what you're going to see. We'd rather come back to you and say, this is what the duck looks like, you know, and this is what we're going to do.
Well, you know how many windmills you want to build, and you know what your load is and your voltage and your amperage, and you know what your projected depth would be. So I would think that those are questions that could be answered at. I just don't understand why you'd have to do the borings first to tell me what the what the parameters are of the project.
Well, we do have to do those borings in order to find out whether or not we can drill underground there to put those cables under.
Right. I know. I know it answers questions for you. I understand that. But it still doesn't seem to answer any questions from me.
And and we appreciate that. And we, that's why we want to do this investigation so that we can come to you in an educated way and explain to you, this is what we're intending to do, and we can, we know we can do it now. And, you know, this is what we're proposing, and this is what we're proposing to the community and all the mitigation that goes with it. So I, you know, I I understand that some people say, oh, you got the pack before the horse. But I don't believe we have, because this is a huge project. We're willing to spend the money upfront to make sure that you're educated and we're educated for the benefit of everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
And and I was, I would just, I'll just reiterate that we're absolutely committed to continue to work with you to to refine our presentation and the materials to you so that we can answer your questions better. We will so we'll sorry, doing disruption on the service here.
Oh, sorry.
Please, please go to the question. I'm sorry.
Peter.
Yes.
Yes, if you can hear me, I was breaking up a little bit there. So I just wanted to comment that we did have some of our technical staff take a look at the substation site. I cannot speak to the beach site. That is not anything that, you know, we didn't, we didn't have any specifics there to to really address or take a look at. So we have not evaluated in any significant way what the impacts of the beach landing points might be. However, with regard to the potential substation location at the existing compost area, we did run through a couple of concepts there, looking at ten to twenty acres and whether there might be a location that was substantially buffered from any of the residential areas that did not encroach on the zone two, that did not interfere with the the wetlands and that initial concept look that we did and sort of conversations, if you will, because these are not even at the point of preliminary designs. They're very, you know, concept level look at placing a facility at that parcel. And we did come to the determination that that it may well be feasible, and it was, it made sense to move forward to the next step of some further studies and surveys to see exactly where that facility might best be located if the board chose to move forward with a substation at that location.
Thank you, Peter. Let me, go ahead, Doug. I was just going to read a comment, but go ahead, Doug Jones.
I understand there's a whole bunch of information still about the high transmission lines. But can you just give me an idea of on a baseline, if we did do the cable at either beach, what physically would anyone see? How far out from the beach would, I mean, this is just very, very general questions. But how far out from the beach, how far down, and then what actually on land would we see?
For I I'll give you that at the sort of a high level. So the export cable that's coming in from offshore wind area that comes up through the sound would be buried deep beneath the beach using the same drilling method that was employed with that Comcast Eversource project, so horizontal directional drilling. And so the cable would come underneath the beach and the near shore areas and then emerge closer to the surface in the parking lot area where there would be a conduit established and and then an underground cable route. Now, we're looking at different options for the underground cabling to the potential onshore substation site. But generally, the project would bury the underground cable on underneath the road, on the shoulder of the road. So we would need to work with the department, the Public Works Department and others on the street permits, of course, to to do that work. But there would be no visual display of cables. It would be buried underground and then connect to an onshore substation as you mentioned. We've looking at different locations for that. And then one of the considerations for the location of that onshore substation is its proximity to the existing right of way in Falmouth and Bourne that is maintained by Eversource. The project is looking to utilize that same right of way for the overhead transmission line to connect from that onshore substation to a new swishing station in Bourne. So the visual impact would be the onshore substation and, you know, the electric transmission line connecting from there to a a new swishing station in Bourne.
Thank you.
I I believe, and Lydia, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but and I think because your question was, what are you going to see at the beach area once it's in as well? And I think it's just going to be a manhole cover that you'll see in the parking lot. That's all that will be visible.
Yes, that's correct, though. It'll be a manhole.
I'm just going to read a comment just before I hear from you, Sam and Doug, because Debbie, and I apologize, you're just come up as Debbie, but she wanted me to read in, I'm opposed to feasibility study accessed at our beaches. I consider myself pro alternative energy and pro environment. This project has environmental impact and anti recreational problems. What is the benefit for Falmouth and its residents? How can the public comment and receive safety and health concerns? So let me just speak to that last piece. Debbie, folks should be doing exactly what you're doing, you know, sending comments. And I know you were part of a group who sent a letter to us over the weekend about this issue. And as we noted, you know, we will, this will be on another agenda, probably several, but since we're not going to vote tonight, because we still need to have some input from town council, it will be on an upcoming agenda and doing just what you're doing, Debbie, by joining in with the discussion is exactly what we ask folks to do. And they can do that either the way you're doing it now during our meeting. I'll say the same reminder that I usually do, the board reads every email that comes to us. We cannot all respond to you because of open meeting law. But you would generally get a response from one member of the board. We've tried to designate it usually being the chair or the vice chair to avoid any confusion. But I can assure you that that every one of the members of our board reads all of that correspondence in preparation for our meetings. So when you send us an email, we're taking a look at it, even if you just get a response from one of us. I saw Sam, I think I'm breaking up a little bit. Sam, I saw your hand up and then Doug Brown.
Try to address the the question of electromagnetic fields. Will the conduit underneath of the roads of the underground section that's on the land side? Will that be a metal conduit?
I'm not sure. Lydia, can you respond to that?
No, the the current, I mean, we're, we're still looking at multiple options currently. It would be the duct banks to men.
You know, the reason I ask is if if it were metal or if it had a a mesh shield, that would actually suppress any electromagnetic fields. You know, what you get standing next to your electric stove generates huge fields. People don't realize it. But you're right on top of the current, and it comes through at thirty amps, which is a large amount, and you're very close to it. So I suspect that this application is really not going to cause any significant physical effect or certainly physiological effect in humans.
Yeah, no. We we have the option to add metal shield. And just to come back to one of the comments about EMF from from Doug Brown, I think. We are, we're, we're, it's part of our studies to conduct EMF assessments, and we're actually doing EMF assessment currently and to include in our federal COP filing and future EFSB filing as well. So we'll have more information to provide to you in the future. And some of the surveys we're doing will help as well educate this, the design, and then be incorporated in our EMF assessments. And then, you know, depending on the results, obviously, we will want to make sure that we are not exceeding any you know, regulations and are creating any harm to the to the community.
Great. Thank you. Doug Brown, did you have a comment?
Well, the other comment is curious as to what the proposal would be. What's the financial incentive to the town? I don't think we've discussed that at all, and I imagine you probably don't have that ready, but I need to know what we're talking about. I mean, as far as what's the benefit to the town?
Well, I don't think we will know that. I'll be able to quantify that number until we know, number one, which beach we're impacting, if we're using a substation site and the impacts to the community. And that's how you you design it all.
Sure, I understand that. But there must be, again, I think you guys have a figure in mind, what it would be if we were to entertain it. So I'm just curious of what that would be, what, at least in a general sense.
I I I don't, I don't have that information.
Okay.
And I don't know if Chris does.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, again, I mean, we're committed to work with you. We don't have, you know, specific information on that, but we definitely see this as a long-term partnership with the town. You know, these assets will be here for a long time. And so we view our relationship accordingly, and, you know, we'll be looking to, you know, discuss those types of agreements, you know, as we proceed further on down the down the line in terms of the design and planning of the project. So we definitely anticipate, you know, we would discuss those types of agreements with you all.
Okay, I have another question after Nancy.
Yep, Nancy, and then I'll come back to Doug. Bye, Nancy.
Are you doing a similar project or have you done a similar project in Barnstable?
No, you might be thinking of the Vineyard Wind project, which is a a project led by a different company.
That was not yours. Okay, that was my first question. My second question is to kind of reiterate what both Doug Brown said, but also what came through in Debbie's email, and that is how does the town benefit from participating in something like this? And I go back to not having enough information in kind of any way, shape, or form to move on this. I know we're not voting tonight, but just with the information that you presented tonight, for me, is not enough to explain, certainly to the Falmouth community, why this would be a good thing.
We will in the future, actually, probably not by distant future, start discussing host community agreement with the town of Falmouth, and that's when a lot of this will be addressed. It's, it isn't something that we would have prepared for a meeting like this, because we're only looking for access to do preliminary studies, see if it's even feasible for us, you know, to come to the community. Once we know that, yeah, then we can start to really quantify. But I I I understand that there may be discussions in the near future where we start discussing all this community.
Doug Jones.
I have to admit, there is one positive I can see, and that is I am very, very supportive of us trying to get to renewable energy as much as possible. Being a seaside community, if we don't start doing something to deal with the effects of climate change, and this is a big one, the kind of energy that these turbines can produce will actually make a difference. And that's a benefit. Forget about the financial. That's a benefit I think we can all get behind. And if we keep stalling these kinds of projects, we're just going to make the situation worse before we have a chance to do anything to protect our seaside.
And that was my point.
I don't argue with that at all. I totally agree, and I'd love to be a part of this, but I'd like to know what I'm getting into. And also, I have a concern about, this is a much larger agreement, potentially. I know it's only preliminary for you guys, and you're not ready for all these hard questions, but the thing is, we're potentially considering entering into what could become a quasi governmental utility. We could also be entering into a venture that might not ultimately succeed, and it might be taken over by another entity for whatever reason. And I don't want to predict gloom and doom on you, but things happen. And I'd like to know also what's the end user agreement and what type of bonding would be in place for projects like this? And I'm sorry to keep on going with all these hard questions, but we really need a big picture of what would be proposed.
Sure. Now, you you've asked a lot of questions, and I I think if we could find a way to pull all your together, the various questions that you've asked this evening and come back to you with another presentation that, you know, because we were prepared tonight to discuss the the right to entry agreement at these sites. And, you know, I think we, you've asked, asked some really great questions that deserve, you know, more thought on our part. And I think we'd like to come back to you for that.
Thank you, Chris. I think that would be helpful. And, you know, even if it's some information you get to us through the town manager's office in advance so that we can take a look at it and then follow up. And and just, you know, I think everybody here, you know, I I think supports the idea of having renewable energy. We just, you know, we're coming at it from a position where we have a lot of folks in town asking some of these hard questions of us, which they should do. And, you know, we have a little bit of a mixed history with renewable energy in our town, and so people, I think, are, their awareness is heightened. And, you know, I think they feel they want to ask some of these tough questions at the forefront. So we know that you can't tell us exactly what a host agreement looks like, because that's something negotiated. But I think people are just trying to get a general picture. So maybe if you can kind of get back to us with some answers to some of those when when we next have you on our agenda.
We'd be happy to do that. And, you know, I I want to thank you all for your patience in this. I mean, this is a trying period, and COVID makes it difficult to to communicate and engage the public, as you all know. And so we will come back to you with more information to help give you a sense as to, you know, where this project is going overall and some of the benefits that it provides to your community.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for our guests?
No, I just want to reiterate what Doug and Sam said, that I'm not opposed to it. I think I would love to be a part of it. I just want to know what the deal would be.
And if I could say, we want to, we can't create a good project without community feedback. And it's important to us to hear from you, hear your questions. We may not always have the answer when you're asking the question, but we will ultimately get those answers before we get to signing a host community, that's for sure. But, you know, some of the questions you asked preliminarily, you know, we can probably get some information back to you. I just want to make sure that we will be on your agenda, your next meeting, because we're going to be running into time sensitivity issues.
Yes, you will be.
All right.
Peter Johnson, stop. Did you have a?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to offer some background information and just to be clear, not to try to sway the board one way or another. I think, you know, clearly, at the end of the day, what's going to drive this project is whether the community feels that it's safe and the, you know, the 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 beach real estate is infinitely valuable. So it's, I don't think anyone wants to put a dollar amount on anything that would be viewed as harming the beaches. But to Doug Brown's question about, you know, what is it going to be worth? Obviously, the proponents are saying that that they don't know, and I am not arguing with that. What I can tell you is that the town of Barnstable with a different company, wasn't Mayflower, it was Vineyard Vineyard Wind, they entered an agreement that actually contemplated two different landing sites. They may be further along now, but I, you know, we have available to us and can provide to the board an agreement that Barnstable entered with Vineyard Wind. And one site had a a contribution from Vineyard Wind to the town of Barnstable for the amount of six million dollars. The other one had a value of sixteen million dollars. And that just sort of goes to the question of, I I think obviously those, you know, those were very different prices depending on the location and the impacts. And perhaps that's what we're hearing is that it before they, before Mayflower is able to perform feasibility and put a design together and identify the impacts, it it may be difficult to get very specific about what the benefits to the community might be.
I I think, yeah, thank you, Peter, and that's helpful. I think folks, you know, even just a general sense, some folks are coming at this not understanding what's even on the table. You know, so I think just some some basic sort of education when we next meet and talk about it at our next meeting would be helpful.
Sure, sure. And just for a point of interest, the sixteen million dollar group that Vineyard Wind had was taking a very large piece of high-value industrial property off of the market and would have hit their tax real pretty dramatically. And that was part of the impact that drove that. There were other considerations as well, but that was one of the biggest.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, and we will see you at our next meeting. Anything you can get to us in advance, I think we'll definitely make it a productive discussion.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are going to vote November twenty twenty town meeting article recommendations. What is this board's pleasure? Doug Jones, do you want to walk us through them? Doug Jones, do you want to walk us through them?
Sure. Article one and article two are both the capital improvements and the non capital projects. And I guess we're gonna have the the actual budgets presented at town meeting. And so I would recommend that for both of those be there. Well, it's actually going to be the finance committee that will make those recommendations, right? So we don't have any recommendations on article one or article two.
Nope. Article three.
Article three, I would probably make a different recommendation than the rest of you. So I think I'll actually stop step back and let someone else make the discussion on that one.
I was just trying to pull up, I saw, I saw some, either Julian or Peter, did you see the feedback Frank had? He had sent an email about this issue about sort of process. Been trying to find it.
It'll take me a minute, but I can find that for you.
Okay, so why don't we move down? I just want to read Frank's email about the process. It may inform what what we decide. So why don't we move down? Oh, okay.
I think Frank is with us as well. If we want him to join us.
If he can, that would be great. Let's, we'll look at while we're bringing him in, can we look at article four? I wasn't here for the presentation when I was not here last week, but I watched it and then I saw some of the follow up question and answer that went on. What is this board's feeling about article four?
I would move that we have our recommendations as printed.
Patterson, second.
Okay, excuse me, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay.
An explanation, I think, would be this is following a very similar agreement that we've set in place for the for the citizens' energy projects. And we're following the pattern we've used for some of the other solar plants. And so it seems to make sense to do it here also.
Yes, great, good point. Okay. And article five, I know Peter Clark is here to answer any questions about any of the charter review questions. What's this board's feeling about? Hi, Peter, how are you?
Hello.
Article, let's start with article five, folks. Any thoughts on?
So we know that this could be a different motion. I'm just making sure how do we put a recommendation based on the new motion that's gonna be made? I'm not as thrilled about recommending it as printed, but I'd be happy to have our recommendation be as going to be amended.
Peter?
Right.
I can speak to that just in terms of the process. If it is the board's desire to put forth wording that is different from the article as presently written and published in the advertised warrant, what you would do is you would have a recommendation that included the text with the amended language.
The only reason I was wavering from that a little bit is I like the idea that the Charter Review Committee was actually making the suggestion of the amendment, which we were then supporting as opposed to it coming across that we didn't like what they did, and we're suggesting different language in what's being proposed. And I don't know how to make that very clear.
Can we put that in the description?
In the explanation.
In the explanation?
Sure.
Peter Clark, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Well, I I had submitted with the revised article an explanation which you may not have seen and basically says that the the change was the result of a discussion and and our feeling as a charter review committee that you should have the flexibility to provide policies as you saw fit to meet the plan. I don't have that exact wording in front of me, but something of that sort, I think, would make clear that we were responding to you, but we also agreed that that there was a need for more flexibility than the original wording provided.
I would make the motion for article five be without that last paragraph, but that last clause phrase, and in the explanation include a language that this was in concurrence with the Charter Review Committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the motion, go a second.
Well, I'll second that. But I think we need to specify what we're dropping out of that line. It's basically from, and then shall be responsible fulfill the plan as voted by town meeting. That's what we're dropping.
Yes, my, that's what we have stated, yes. We understand that and agree with that.
I was just trying to see if we needed to put an and in someplace else, but we don't.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. With that, any further discussion? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you.
Article six, seven, eight, and nine as a as printed.
Patrick.
Really simple, that the amount of work that the Charter Review Committee has put forward to get these done. And I'm fully supportive of what they're doing, and we hope that they get passed on the blanket.
Here, here.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. And English Braga, aye for the last folks. I don't think I voted. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, up in the very lead paragraph of the warrant, it says Barnstable SS, and I don't know what that acronym.
For the county. It's just telling us what county we're in.
So the SS is a common acronym?
Yes, for you just have, I just know because it's on every court document. Barnstable comma SS for Barnstable County. I don't know what it stands for. I just know that that's what it usually is on every court document.
Okay, well, it's one of those.
Usually, usually not there. The formatting looks a little bit weird, but usually it's it's separated from a sentence like that, so.
I would recommend we write county in there for the sake of all of our fellow town meeting members who probably have the same question I do, who are not attorneys and don't see this language all the time. The other thing I would recommend is where it specifies the meeting location, I think we should really say Falmouth High School Fieldhouse. I know we give an address, but just makes it clear. I would just insert Falmouth.
Okay. Um, excellent. Anything else on those? We're gonna go back to article three. Okay, thank you very much, Peter.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Please convey our thanks to Charter Review Committee. They have just done endless, you guys have done endless work on tweaking and reworking all of this language, and it's been a long, long process. So we really thank everyone for continuing that work.
Good to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Peter, do you, Peter Johnson, stop. Do you want to just, can you read that article that Frank sent the email? Excuse me.
Sure, I can, happy to. The email from Frank is an email that was sent to Bob Amet and copied you and the town manager and myself. And it reads, Bob, the statute is chapter forty, section fifteen A. By my reading, the statute requires a preliminary vote of the school committee, followed by a vote of town meeting. After the school committee votes, it shall forthwith give notice of such determination, dot, 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 to the Board of Selectment of the town. End quote. At any time after the receipt of such notice, the Board of Selectmen may ask town meeting to transfer the land to another board or office for another municipal purpose. So I believe the gist of that is that in order for town meeting to act on this, there must first be a vote by the school committee.
Okay. Before town meeting can do anything.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Sorry, referring to article?
Go ahead, Doug Brown.
Referring to article?
Yes, we're going back to.
Didn't they already vote that?
No, they did not. They did not vote.
Really?
It was, the issue was raised and they declined to vote. By my memory, I was at one of the meetings, I recall.
I think they voted to declare it surplus, correct? But did not vote the second component is is my recollection.
Hmm. I don't have any information within the last month or two.
They haven't, they haven't voted on it in the last month or two.
Yeah, the last I heard, they had not voted to transfer control to the select board.
Correct. So I don't know if that, you know, colors folks' thoughts on where we go with this. I don't, you know, we wouldn't, I don't think we'd want to have an article that can't be acted on at town meeting. So what are, what's the board's feeling about this?
Well, I guess I'll make my two points. One is I'm not in favor of it. The second, if there's any confusion, this is not the time to have, this is not the town meeting to have an article that has any confusion behind it. We need to get this town meeting as efficiently and quickly done as possible for everyone's health.
That's a shame that it seems like it's not going anywhere then. I mean, the school committee could still vote if they had their chance, and they chose not to. Geez, that's surprising.
Do I have a motion from this board? I mean, I think, you know, I I I won't belabor the point. I really wasn't, I mean, I am in favor of the project. I like what I've seen about the project, but that email from Frank raised some concerns for me about where we are actually at in the process. I thought we were a little bit further along.
I thought so too.
Well, it can always be withdrawn. You want to leave it open?
If it's not done, if it's not at the point where it can be acted on by town meeting.
That's correct. I mean, at least it's a placeholder so that there's further action and maybe could take place at April town meeting, at least save us, you know, a six month or maybe a year delay.
So when's the appropriate time for us to discuss whether we think it's a good idea in that spot or not? We never have.
Well, I think that's really a decision of town meeting. It's not our judgment as to whether, you know, that merry go round is going to go on that site or not.
Well, they're they're asking for our recommendation on this question. So it's appropriate for us to discuss how we feel about it.
Well, we did discuss it a couple of meetings ago.
We never did.
You and Nancy were not in favor of putting it on the warrant, and three of us were.
But that's actually just putting the article on the warrant. That's actually not even whether we're in favor of the what the article's proposing. It's merely a question about putting it on the warrant, and we have the COVID as a reason why. I mean, I could be very much in favor of this, saying this just isn't the time to discuss it.
Right.
We've never discussed as a board, is this the right spot for the carousel? We were, it came to us about a year and a half ago. They're saying there was an interest, and the question was never asked of, did we think this is the right spot for it?
Well, because we always defer to the school committee to determine whether or not they wanted to give up the land, because that was the first question. And apparently, that's still a question.
So, I mean, I I think, you know, whatever this board, I, you know, I don't want to push my agenda, so whatever this board feels comfortable doing, given, given the knowledge that we have from Frank, as well as, you know, the other piece that we're going to discuss, which is thinking about, you know, the actual sort of structure of town meeting and the time constraints of town meeting this, this time around.
Well, I'm in favor of keeping it on because I'm in favor of the project. I was a little surprised when they first presented it, that it was going to squeeze into that lot, and I didn't really see how that was going to work. But I thought that the presentation showed that it could work. I like the idea of keeping the carousel in town, and it makes sense that it's very close to where it was. So, you know, people that come to town every year, and they'll notice it. It's still over there. So I think it makes sense. I would like to give it a chance.
I'd love to push really hard to try to get it onto the library lawn. I think it's a way better spot for it.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a procedural point.
And then Sam.
So the warrant is closed. This article will be on the town meeting warrant.
Right.
The only question now is the recommendation. So you, the board is, you know, by charter is supposed to print a recommendation in the warrant. There are exceptions sometimes, you know, that needs to be postponed. So, you know, the options are recommend from the floor, indefinite postponement, recommend. Those, I think, are really the three options.
Yes, thank you for reining it back into at least what is before us tonight.
Can we, can we recommend that the school committee revisit it?
We can ask them later, but no, we can't recommend it. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I really disagree with Doug's idea of putting it on the library lawn. I, I think that library lawn is precious piece of parkland that gets used for multiple purposes. So I'm definitely against that. So we're in opposition over where it would be relocated. I find it to be such a popular asset to the town among the children. It's there next to the library and next to that really beautiful playground that sits on the Melon Hall, Melon Hall campus. I think it's it's a logical sight, you know, I, I don't have a problem with it. And, you know, they did do a layout, a footprint of how it would fit in there. And it sort of complements the Eddie Marks Cooper as well.
Excuse me.
I would, I'm gonna move to recommend the article as printed.
Okay, I have a motion from Sam to move as printed.
I would second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just that in the explanation, we'll have to say, recommend this in hopes that the school committee will take further action.
Well, that's essential, Doug. I don't think we have to say that.
I think the reality is if it hasn't happened at town meeting, the, we'll have to make a different recommendation on the town meeting floor or address that issue.
I just feel like it should be mentioned, because if we're recommending it, and the school committee hasn't really even made that possible, we should make mention of the fact that we're hoping that it's going to be possible, but it sounds like we're recommending something that could be done when we know that at this time it's not possible.
I would think at that point, you just change the recommendation and definitely.
Exactly, and we just explain why. So, okay, I just wanted to say Sandy Cuny also just, I'm assuming it's Sandy Cuny, made a statement that said, and we are going to improve Shiverick's Pond soon, exclamation point, I think in reference to the location. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? This is to vote the recommendation to be as printed. Taylor?
Taylor, no.
Patterson?
Patterson, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Jones?
Jones, no.
And English Braga, yes. Okay, is that it for all of our articles? I believe it is.
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Okay, next.
Did you get the solar article?
Yeah, yeah.
We proved that.
Okay, and I just, let's see, where are we? Review discussion of town meeting, a November town meeting. So as we all know, we've received a lot of feedback about the town meeting that we just wrapped up and about how we are going to conduct town meeting in November. And I know I have spoken to David Viera. He was trying to figure out, he had talked a little bit about trying to get out some kind of survey to town meeting members. The time is getting kind of short, but I know he was gonna try and speak with our clerk about that. Tough timing, because obviously the clerk's office is, you know, really knee deep in handling election issues right now. So I think David was still waiting to have that conversation. But wanted to at least bring the issue to this board to get feedback from any of you about, you know, thoughts about alternatives or changes or whatever the concerns are that you have yourself or that constituents have brought to you. Peter or Julian, did either one of you want to add anything to the beginning of that conversation?
No, only, only that, as you noted, we've received a number of email inquiries about potential for a virtual meeting. We know that has been undertaken in some other jurisdictions. I do want to, if I could just clarify a couple of items. Madam Chair, there's been some debate about the issue of quorum. And just for the, for the record, looking back at the April town meeting from 2019, the quorum count was 186 persons. Again, that was April of a year ago, not April of 2020. And so on, at the June 22 meeting, which was at the high school field this year, we had a hundred and seventy-nine, just a few fewer than that. Uh, at the September fourteenth fieldhouse meeting, we had a quorum confirmation of a hundred and thirty-eight. So that was really a net forty-eight fewer town meeting members than we had in April of two thousand nineteen. In some quarters, it's been suggested that we were well below, over a hundred people fewer. And that's really not the case, given the, the confirmed record of who was in attendance for the quorum call. Just wanted to clarify that. And also to note that, of course, the April town meeting had well over forty articles, forty-nine articles to be accurate. And thankfully, we only have nine, nine articles which are to be determined on Monday, November sixteenth. So thankfully with the, at the request of the select board and as responded by a number of parties, we only have one petition article and only nine total to complete. So we're gratified for that and your announcement that it would be at the fieldhouse could be altered if this board so chooses.
Thank you. And I, and I'm just going to read this before it gets lost in the shuffle. Comment from Peter Clark, that sound is a big issue in the fieldhouse, which we have talked about. Um, and that they used to rent a system for graduation. Sam and Doug Brown, please. Go ahead, Sam.
Question, I, I certainly sympathize with the health risk issues. A lot of people certainly are concerned about that. Can the town not provide the N ninety-five or KN ninety-five masks that really protect you from other people as well as other people from you? And actually provide them to town meeting members to help enhance the safety of an indoor event like this?
Well, Madam Chair and Select Board Member Patterson, we can explore that. The prevailing notion still is that these M ninety-five masks should be exclusively for first responders. So, uh, there, there may be some challenge in providing well over a hundred masks for town meeting members. I guess I would suggest that we include Scott McGann in that conversation. My suspicion is that Scott will confirm that the M ninety-five mask would not be absolutely mandatory from a health standpoint for, uh, what we anticipate for likely nine town meeting, excuse me, nine warrant articles. But I don't want to speak exclusively for Scott. In that regard, also we keep in mind that we do social distance and extend beyond that and also the filtration system at the fieldhouse has been upgraded with the town working with the school department. Uh, so that it is a considerably enhanced filtration system. And as many of us will recall from being chilled at the last reconvening of town meeting, they, they run that filtration system continuously during the process. So uh, we're certainly happy to explore that. But I, I guess in the event that those masks continue to be uh, reserved for first responders, we want to be able to, uh, to give reasonable opportunities and information to town meeting members should we be, be proceeding.
Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I know that the, the school department has sourced quite a large number of those KN ninety-five masks. And I might say that having used one myself because I had some from before the pandemic. They stay away from your mouth and people tend to garble their speech when the mask is pulled right up against their lips. And the nice thing about the ninety-five masks is they stand out in front and people tend to articulate what they're saying a little more clearly to help with this whole, you know, audiovisual issues. So that's another reason. But I would suggest that you maybe talk to uh, to Patrick Murphy about where he sourced those magazines, those, those items. They are PPE used by first responders. But I think the supply has increased enormously and it might not be a, you know, a difficult thing to get in anymore.
Julian and then Doug.
If I may, I, I do want to clarify, which I'd be happy to do and get back to the board. The, the KN ninety-five, to the best of my knowledge, is a different mask than the one that's worn by first responders. I believe that's an M ninety-five mask, but I'll double check that. I believe there's a, a difference in specification. And if so, the KN ninety-five may be much easier to acquire and may not be a, a, a first responder requirement. So we're happy to check on that as well.
Great, thank you. Doug Brown?
I think we need to at least get a better plan for the microphone carriers. As they were walking up to the people, handing them the mic and the people would yank off their mask and start talking right and the kids were right in front of them. And I was very concerned about that. I didn't like that at all. I don't know if we really should even have microphone carriers. I think maybe we should just have two microphones and a stand by themselves in an area away from everybody. So you got to walk over there and stand there and people were, you know, people stand up to talk. So they've left their six foot spot. They might move around a little to make their point. They look around the room. And I don't think the social distancing was really maintained at those times. And a lot of those people were taken off their mask to make their points. So it just defeats the purpose of the whole thing. I think the sound system issue led to that, that too. Because people didn't want to try to speak into the mic that was barely working anyways with the mask on. So I think we need to do better on that. And I, I suggest we get rid of the mic carriers or maybe limit them only to just, you know, run up and wipe the microphone and then sit back down.
I think the thing about the, the microphone holders coming to the people is it limits more of that movement of the, the town meeting members. But I think we really, I agree, we have to revisit. If we're going to have the microphone carriers, revisit how that works. And maybe we need, and I'm not knocking the young folks who are really wonderful to volunteer. But maybe we need some adults who are willing to volunteer and, you know, just, I think, you know, again, we usually have the high school students do it and it's a really wonderful tradition. But maybe it's, you know, sort of a different situation. Uh, the other thing I would say is people didn't utilize the space. The entire, you know, from where I was sitting up in the front, the entire right side, I think Doug Jones probably had thirty empty seats around him. And people were all crammed over. So I think we need, if we're going to continue with that, we need to be more directive about making sure people spread out to use that space. That one corner was very crowded.
By the door.
Whole other corner was hardly utilized. So, um, you know, if we're going to do it, I do believe we need to be more directive about where folks are going to go. I can tell you from my, and David may change his mind, but I can tell you from my conversations with David, that he feels that a virtual meeting would be very difficult to manage. Um, he has some concerns about it and I'll let him articulate those concerns. So I know other towns and we got some really great resources on examples of other towns that have done it virtually. Um, so, you know, David can weigh in on that at a later date, but I think his initial feeling was that that wasn't a format that he favored.
Okay, I have another. Why didn't we use the little count, counters, clickers or whatever you call them?
I think it's touching.
It can infect it.
I think handing them out, taking them back, wiping them down, all of that. Um, any other? Go ahead, Sam.
On the microphones, whoever the carriers are, we could have an extended boom so that it holds out four feet. I see reporters using it all the time on the news. So they're not standing right next to the person that they're interviewing. That gets them a little bit, but I agree with Doug very much. I, I cringed every time I saw those high school people standing, you know, just a couple of feet away from people who are projecting because they felt like they really wanted to make a strong point. And that's just spewing aerosols out which potentially could be carrying that COVID nineteen virus.
And a few times, people didn't even wait to start talking and just right in the kid's face.
If you have the boom, then they naturally stand off. And I think that's the way it maybe force a bit of distance between the mic carrier, whether they are adults or high school students.
Megan, do you think David would consider a hybrid model?
I don't know. I don't want to speak for him, but I mean, one thought is if, you know, say there are those forty people who, you know, we didn't get this time, who would have wanted to participate from home. I mean, if there's only forty people virtually, is that more manageable?
One of the things that Zoom is coming up with now is the, i- if someone wants to participate, it keeps track of who raised their hand first. Uh, it has a new poll feature where you can do voting through it very, very easily. So, uh, and certainly the way that a lot of schools are doing it with the hybrid of having some kids in the classroom and some kids zooming in and mixing it that way. So certainly by November, uh, the school system will have had a lot of experience and be able to be helpful and how could we, how we could do that.
Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the, the process point that, you know, obviously the input of the moderator is a great help and arguably has more experience than any of us on, on this call with how to run a town meeting. Um, but that said, just from a, um, a, a decision authority standpoint, I believe it is the decision of the select board to determine the forum for the meeting. Uh, it falls to the moderator if the original posted warrant date and location is continued. Then the moderator clearly has authority to set the, uh, a time and location. But initially, it is the board's decision.
So, you know, I think what we'll do from, from this position is to continue that conversation with David and maybe examine some of the issues that you guys have brought up. So the possibility of a hybrid, really thinking about how we utilize those microphones differently, how we could improve that and have it on our next upcoming meeting to give an update. Does that make sense?
Yeah, please explore better masks than just the cloth masks. So that people could be safer. Without having the cloth pulled up against your lips.
Yeah, and also maybe keeping the masks on. I mean, I know it makes speech garble, but we just, we're all getting used to that. And, you know, if someone has to repeat themselves, um, you know, they have to repeat themselves. So, um, we can look into some of those, perhaps look into some of those, um, possibilities. Anything, Doug Brown?
If it turns out that the, uh, microphones on stands is not practical and that's against safety protocol or whatever. Uh, maybe at least the microphone carriers should have those good protective masks or maybe a face shield, a little more send them into battle, a little more prepared.
Real, that's a really good point. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay, so we'll continue this discussion. So ne- next we have a status update on the proposed Joint Base Cape Cod machine gun range. There were a couple of things that went on this week. Doug Brown and Julian and I were invited to a presentation earlier last week. Sorry, my, we're already in the next week. From quite a few folks, the whole team working on this proposed machi- machine gun range. Um, and we were, they gave us a presentation at the police station in Falmouth. Couple of hours long that really went through, you know, all of the information about the proposal. Uh, I then attended another, uh, meeting at the base on Friday. Julian was there as well. It was actually a very similar presentation. And I'll just, I'll just state that some of the conversation was about where did the communication break down? Because from the, that, the base team's perspective, they've been talking about this for years. The project has been in the work since two thousand thirteen. They've indicated they've briefed us on it each time that they've come, although they noted, I think Doug Brown put it well when he said it was a brief brief, you know, sometimes it might be a, a quick, you know, bullet point in the midst of what is usually a very long presentation. Um, they noted emails and packets with the proposal that they were, that were provided to us over the summer. Some emails which Doug and I could not find in our emails, possibly because they were sent out to hundreds of recipients and it may have been screened out through our, you know, it was sent out to tons of folks. So it may have been screened out. We may not have received it. The hard copies, we weren't, you know, I don't remember receiving them, but this is in the midst of COVID. So I certainly note that I could have missed something. But, um, we were supposed to have been sent and they did show us the, the list of folks that were sent copies of all of sort of the more detailed proposals as this process has gone on. So part of the conversation was improving communication chain and making sure that we have this information when we need it in advance. And then the rest of it was really about the proposal itself. Um, there is going to be a public meeting on the eighth. I think they have a hundred participants who can join in on their Zoom. And, uh, that invitation, I believe, is on the Joint Base Cape Cod website. Is that correct, Julian?
They, they advised us that they were placing it there. I haven't explored it myself to confirm, but it is to start at five thirty to seven thirty is the information that we had. And as you noted, Madam Chair, unfortunately limited to only one hundred participants.
Um, and so, you know, I, I'll just give a quick overview. I don't want to, you know, I'm not going to present the whole program because I don't have it for you, but basically the highlights are this. The program, this, the proposal has been in the work since about two thousand and thirteen with ongoing environmental assessments in that time period for both NEPA and MEPO, which are the environmental protection agencies, both at the state and federal level. Um, there seems to be, um, and Doug Brown and Julian, correct me if I'm wrong, but fairly thorough environmental assessment by a number of stakeholders addressing water quality, noise, soil, um, envi- um, the wildlife, the impact that this project would have on all of those things. Um, there is a plan in place because it's required by statute and by, um, some of the protections put in place following the issues of the waste of the water contamination at the base. That there are quite a few pieces in place for ongoing assessment of the impact of the project if it goes forward or as it goes forward. Both looking at, um, water, the impact to water and soil, wildlife, as well as assessment of noise. The firearms that proposed will only use copper bullets. And all of those copper bullets will be retrieved. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, as opposed to the lead bullets that were used in the past that people have some concern about in terms of, um, percolating through the soil into water. So there, the information that we received was much more thorough. The other piece was that it is not fifteen hundred acres. It is, um, a total of two hundred and eleven for the second phase. Um, currently, right now, it'll be, they've, they have ninety acres that have already been cleared. Um, and there'll be sixty more that are cleared. I might have that inverted. It might be sixty and then ninety.
I think it's the other way.
Thank you. Um, so it's nowhere near the fifteen hundred acres that we were hearing. I think it came through from one of the news sources and people were very concerned about it. It's a fairly small footprint. Um, and they are doing, the, the thing that I found most interesting is that they have created a mitigation bank. So they're preserving somewhere around six hundred and ninety-nine acres to offset this project and other projects, um, that they have going. So they have, um, around the entire base, and you'll see this in the presentation, where they've chosen sort of, um, appropriate environmental, based on the, the, some of the endangered species and things like that, sections of the base to preserve as a mitigation bank. That's some of the information that we learned. Doug, did I miss anything? Julian, just.
I think the, the, the thing that they were really excited and proud about and that, I want to just relate that these guys were really proud of this project and they really felt surprised that we didn't know about it. So I felt like they were being honest and genuine. The fact that it was just a misunderstanding of miscommunication. So I, I took them at their word. The, uh, they've got this project that they're going to re, uh, reinvigorate their wildlife management plan and start to really manage the Pine Barren Forest resource to the maximum that they can. A lot more controlled burns and a lot more, uh, wildlife habitat restoration. So it's a big commitment and they're going to spend a lot of money out there. And they also reminded us that the military installation currently injects almost a half a billion dollars a year into our local economy. So just a little reminder that they are a big part of our economy and they hope that we can kind of work with them so that they can facilitate this range because the closest place that they can go to train is to place that they can go to train is 270 miles away. When you only have a guy for just the weekend, it takes a big chunk of training time out of the action. So I was a little more receptive when I heard their plans, and I'm feeling a little better about it. I think that the meeting on Thursday is Environmental Review Board, Civilian Advisory, Citizens Advisory Committee, and also the Environmental Science Review Board. So this is a third-party review and discussion and comment. I did see a letter, and there was one letter from the state DEP, I believe it was. It said, "The one concern that they had so far was that they didn't want the grenade launchers to be used because the propellants will, you know, that's a negative for the groundwater." And the, I kept trying to get the Colonel to say, "Will you commit to not using the grenade launcher?" But instead of just saying, "Yes, I will not use a grenade launcher," he said, "We are committed to only using copper steel ammunition." So it's a combination of steel with a copper jack. And what I found out also was interesting was that the copper steel ammunition is not just a training round, it's the new bullet that the Army's going to use because it's a better round. So I really like the idea that they keep track of each round that they fire so they know how many millions are in that sandbank. And when they reach a certain point, they bring out the excavation machine and they scoop out the sand and they sift it out and they get all the bullets back, or the majority of them. I found another thing to be really interesting was the fact that they do 600 borings on the existing range every year at random times, and they sample all those and try to find any contaminants that are in the water. And they've been doing this in a long, for a long time, and they can't find any evidence of leachate from the lead in any of those 600 samples from the firing of lead bullets for the last 70 years. So that was really surprising because, I mean, we all assume that it's a problem because we know lead leachate is bad. But, you know, they're improving something that's currently not, apparently not causing a problem. So that's a surprise.
So what I'd like to do is, they provided us with a copy of, on Friday, a copy of the presentation, and I'd like to be able to scan it and give it to the rest of the board or make copies of it. But just to, Julian, did you take your copy? If you don't have it, I think I still have mine. And get it to the board. It's Doug. It is the presentation that we saw with all of the PowerPoint slides. So it'll give this board the base, if you're not able to go and join the meeting on Thursday, it'll give that baseline presentation that we received. But I really urge the public in particular, I think they heard our concerns mostly around the issue of communication. And so they, where they are in the process now is all of the comments that were sent into them, they have to go through and create answers to, and that needs to be done before they go to the next step to have the final plan approved. So all the comments that the public has sent in, and I think there have been quite a few, they have to go through and answer and create a document that's then presented sort of at the next level. Doug Jones?
The acreage difference that you guys have just reported on is really significant. And that was the thing that was just striking me so much is if they were doing something quite as big as being described and we hadn't heard about it in a way that really stuck in our mind, that's what surprised me. If it's the kind of acreage now we're talking about, I can believe that that would have been something they would have mentioned much more in passing and appropriately in passing, but not to the extent that we were being told, being done of hundreds or close to 1,000 acres.
And the other thing that I didn't mention was that there's 16 ranges around that base in different locations, and only a small, I think six or seven are still in use at all. Some of them are small arms training and some forth. A lot of them have now been overgrown and they're abandoned, but they're still on the map. And they all are on the periphery of the base, and they all point inward to that impact zone. So that makes sense. The range that they want to use, I believe, is the biggest one that they have now, and it's just an expansion of it. And that's why the additional clearing, so they can use these high-powered machine guns, which currently they're just using small arms and rifles and so forth. So it's an expansion of something rather than a clear cutting of a forest. So it's pretty different than what I was envisioning.
Yes, I mean, I will say, I think Doug, Julian and I went in with the same concerns we heard from this board, a little skeptical about having, how we could have missed something as Doug notes of that size. But it, the facts are a lot different. And I think that the positive that came out of this is that there's been a good refocus on the need for improved communication, not just for this project, but going forward. And there are some opportunities we have to, you know, be part of, there are a lot of conversations that take place on a monthly basis. So we also are just kind of looking into making sure we have representatives from the town that are able to go to those meetings, funnel that information back to us. Any other thoughts from the board? And I'll ask Julian, if you can't find your copy, please let me know, and we'll get that out to the board.
No problem, I have it.
Okay, thank you. Great, okay.
One more note is, unfortunately, on Thursday evening, I'm going to be tied up with family funeral, so I'm not going to be able to go to that meeting on Thursday. So anybody else wants to do it in my place?
I too do have a conflict Thursday night. That's the meeting preservation committee.
Okay.
And there are some significant issues that are going to be coming up at that time.
Do you know, Julian, how are they going to determine what hundred people get to go into this meeting?
They did not, they did not indicate. It seems like an inappropriately small number, but because as you mentioned, it's the Environmental Management Commission and not technically Joint Base Cape Cod that's holding the meeting. And I guess this separate entity determined that that was the size of the Zoom they preferred to move forward with. So my guess is it will be first come, first served, but they did not clarify one way or the other.
But it is open to the public. I saw the notification, it's a public meeting, so just whoever logs on first gets in there.
That's my belief, yes.
Okay. You're muted.
Maybe if we can just get that link to the members of the board, if that's possible, Julian? And if someone from the board, Doug Brown was going to take that on, but if anybody else, even if they can go for a little bit, it's going to be to sort of hear that presentation and ask questions. So if anyone can do it, that would be great, even for part of it.
And I also, I did share that link information with my friends at the Thomas Water Stewards, and a couple of those folks are going to attend, even though it's a funny conflict with the Silence Spring Institute's annual celebration on the same exact day and time, but funny coincidence.
Get some, some people over there. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, and we are going to wait, as I noted, on the strategic plan. It looks like we are down to individual selectmen reports.
Okay.
Anyone who wants to jump in?
We sort of already gave our report of what we did this week.
All base stuff this week. Anyone else?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Okay, Town Managers Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two items in addition to what we've talked about already. Monday, October 12th is the, of course, the Columbus Day holiday observed in the Commonwealth, and town hall and town administrative offices will be closed. Also, I was very pleased to attend the anniversary celebration this past Friday evening. And perhaps at a future Select Board meeting, we want to consider a proclamation acknowledging that 90th anniversary. I had not been aware in advance or would have brought that to the board sooner in terms of a potential proclamation. It's certainly an anniversary to be acknowledged and applauded. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Good, thank you.
This I did overlook to mention, I did attend the Independence House Annual Breakfast on Friday morning. It was very interesting. And at the end of the speakers, it was, a lot of it was about race and diversity and how people in disadvantaged communities are more likely to suffer the domestic violence as well as the fact that have less resources. So it's like a double edged sword for them. So that was a kind of a highlighted part of the breakfast. At the end of it, though, they recount all of the victims of domestic violence and kind of the relevant facts around the case that whatever is known at the time. And it was pretty impactful. So I just wanted to relate that. That was an interesting meeting. And also, I got a call on Saturday, Sunday morning from WXTK, Patrice Dizmeris, wanted to just ask about the questions about the base, so pretty much said the same thing I said tonight here.
Great, thank you. And just, we all missed the fact that last week, we had a really wonderful joint meeting with the school committee. It was so great with an incredible presenter, and I think it was really dynamic and such a nice, you know, just really nice to get together with the school committee and to be a student again for a while, which is such a luxury to have somebody very skilled like Dr. Wernham really walking us through some really thought-provoking and helpful exercises around cultural proficiency and really thinking about how we can be more responsive and more inclusive. So that was just, I think, a really wonderful event, and I want to thank the school committee because they really did take the lead. Dr. Doerr and the school committee took the lead on securing Dr. Wernham as a presenter and getting that on our agenda. So thanks to them.
And that, one last thing about the Independence House, Lieutenant Governor Karen Plio did actually speak at the beginning of it and took an interest in the meeting. So they're taking it seriously up in the State House, too.
Great, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Taylor? She said aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Aye. Brown?
Aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, English Braga, aye. Thank you all very much. Thank you.